This Farover City Council Committee on Finance meeting will now be called to order. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Counselor Kadeem?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Oliver LeBeau?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Peckham?
Pelletier?
Yeah.
Pereira?
Yeah.
President Pashen?
Here. Just so everybody's aware, Counselor Peckham is running a few minutes late. He's in some road construction right now for some reason on South Main Street, so he'll be here shortly. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting. Counselor Peckham is here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. This evening is, once again, like yesterday, we are going to try to get this meeting completed by 9:15, between 9:15 and 9:30. Last night, we ran a little past, around 9:30. Just so everybody's aware, we do have an anticipation to resume these budget deliberations on Tuesday, June 22nd, and then, if necessary, the following Tuesday, June 29th. So I think we'll be able to have a pretty good understanding of where we are at on June 22nd, next Tuesday. If we find it necessary to schedule another meeting on the Monday, June 28th, if we can do that, we probably will. But we don't know where we're at, so we'll wait for that time. So I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on that at this point. This evening, we have our department heads. What I'm going to try to do is want to try to get our department heads out of here as quick as possible before we get into other departments, such as, you know, the mayor's office, city clerk's office, because they're already here, so everybody's aware. Before we begin, and our Corporation Counsel, Mr. McCoy, Mrs. Heidi are at the table with us today. There was a discussion had last night, Mrs. Sahadi, and with the Law Department here, probably appropriate to get this, and I don't meet the blind side yet, but I sent an email this afternoon. Counselor Kadeem referenced the Durfee High School Advisory Committee, I'm sorry, the Oversight Committee, as well as Counselor Dion on a consultant that has been paid. Do we have a follow-up on if that specific individual has resigned from the Durfee Oversight Committee? We had this discussion last night. You guys are going to get back to us today, so I was just wondering where we were at. Mr. McCoy?
Thank you, Counsel President. Couple things. We did reach out to the individual, the consultant, and the mayor's office, specifically the mayor, called the Ethics Division, initially spoke to a woman by the name of Slattery. Ms. Slattery was referring it to a Miss Knee. As of me coming down here at 5:00, we did not get a call back on that. So as of this point, the individual has not resigned, okay? We're waiting for an ethics opinion back. We did not get a call back before 5:00 and me coming down here. There also was a second, and as you know, this was an emergency situation upon Mr. Gallagher's leaving. The individual, you know, it is a woman-owned business, she does have construction background or not, so I think internally, it was probably a legitimate, you know, it was a legitimate decision, and I'm sure her extra set of eyes have been helpful and needed. And follow-up to Counselor Peckham's question, it looks like the first payment was approximately the third week of April, and fortunately, they did get three quotes, and she's been paid approximately $13,000, I believe. That was your follow-up question.
Okay, so...
So unfortunately, on the conflict issue, or the potential conflict, I can't give you an answer on that yet. I'm assuming we'll receive a call by tomorrow, by noon time. On the procurement issue, we were told that they did secure three quotes.
Okay, so just so you're aware, from my perspective, right, whether there is a conflict or a perceived conflict, we want to try to get out of the way of being perceived or unperceived with conflicts. I think there was nothing harmful in the intent that the mayor had to quickly have somebody oversee a very important project. But in my opinion, and I'm not the State Ethics Commission, or an attorney, but I think, quite candidly, that a person who is on the Oversight Committee, who approves change orders and purchase orders, and the design of the schools, also getting tasked with the same responsibility and getting paid to oversee the construction. So I'm just giving you my honest opinion about how I feel about it. The State Ethics could rule separately, but I think if I were you and the administration, I would quickly just ask the person to resign and then fill that seat, because I don't see how one person can do it. It's like being on two separate boards overseeing a project. I just don't see how that could actually be done that way, so...
Your opinion is noted. Again, he went right to Ethics, called there today. Two different, I don't know if they're attorneys or not, two different representatives from Ethics got involved. I believe Ms. Slattery is the supervisor of Miss Knee, and again, we were awaiting a call back from that.
I appreciate the proactive steps, Counsel Kilby, but I appreciate the proactive steps that you've taken today. We probably should have done earlier, I think, you know, playing Monday morning quarterback at this point, but I think we need to act quicker. And I respect the State Ethics Commission, but there's plenty of people that would be able to gladly serve on the Oversight Committee, especially at this stage, that I don't think we should wait. I think the perceived or the perceived or unperceived conflict should already be addressed. Just giving you my opinion.
Yep.
Counselor C-3? Counselor Kilby?
Yeah, very quickly, this came up last night, so due diligence was done, right, Mr. McCoy? You called the Ethics Commission, they're not going to get back here the same... I did not, but the mayor did. All right, they're not going to get back here the same day, so... And called twice. I think by the time, probably by tomorrow, we're going to get their opinion from them, or at least by the end of the week. So the issue will be resolved, and, you know, I'm in agreement with you, Counsel President, in terms of, Mrs. Cusick is very qualified. She was a president of...
Ms. Collins.
I'm sorry. Yep, that's my missp... So I'll leave it at that, in terms of, you know, we'll get an answer back quickly.
And I want to comment...
I was confused with Rebecca, so...
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate the efforts that the mayor put into it today, I just, I'd like to see some action on that, so we don't have any issues. Counselor in seat six.
Six.
Counselor Peckham.
Every meeting. I appreciate the diligence, I do. If possible, can we obtain the quotes or the bids that came in?
Sure.
That way, for all transparency, we know that there was a bid process.
Yeah, the names in the...
Please.
Yeah, it's not an advertised, you know, bid process, invitation...
Well, if she made $13,000, then that...
Thirteen.
$13,000, that supersedes, and would have to go out to bid, correct? Anything over 10 grand?
Well, soliciting, again, soliciting three quotes.
Okay.
An advertised sealed bid is at 50, in excess of $50,000.
Okay.
Whether you do a bid or in RFP process.
Do we know what she's making in an entirety?
I...
Because so far, she's been paid 13 grand, so it's just $13,000?
Yeah, since, again, approximately the third week of April.
Okay, is she going to continue to be paid after that $13,000, so that number may go up?
Well, I mean, as of right now, we're going to, you know, if Ethics says no more...
Let's leave that out of it, the ethics part.
And I'm going to relay, you know, the sentiments of Counsel President to the mayor, regardless of how Ethics weighs in. But again, we're hoping to have that, I would think by noon tomorrow, we'll get a response.
I'm just trying to separate the ethics part of it and the procurement part of it.
The procurement part of it, yeah, exactly.
Yes, but to answer your question, Counselor, she is overseeing the project, taking the shoes of Mr. Gallagher, and she's spending, I believe, between 25 and 27 hours a week doing those tasks at this particular point, so she will be there, for the most part, through the duration, but obviously, we're going to keep in mind that she cannot earn more than $50,000, because at that point, it would have required an RFP.
Okay, I'm not questioning Mrs. Collins specifically, I just would like to see the process and how we went about it as a city. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadeem.
No, my questions were answered, I yield.
Thank you. Okay, very good. So the Law Department is here, Corporation Counsel, welcome. Brief presentation, questions?
Yes, so before Attorney Remsley begins, the worksheets that you got on your desk yesterday, there were three different departments. The Law Department was one of them. The judgments and the claims and damage account was reduced from $450 to $300,000. So that's the reduction. So I know there was a question as to what changed on that particular worksheet, but that was the change. After reviewing the budget with Attorney Remsley, it was determined that his need for judgments and fiscal '22 would be $150,000, and his needs for claims would remain at the same $150,000 that was budgeted in '21.
All right, starting on page 137, I'd like to start with just the Law Department salaries. I just want to remind the counsel here that the fiscal year '22 request is actually, it's really not much of a jump from fiscal year 2020. The Law Department had a significant reduction last year due to COVID. If you recall, there was a $65,000 Assistant Corporation Counsel position that went unfilled last year. What happened is when I started in January 2020, I requested from Mayor Coogan if I could have a little bit of time to figure out what kind of specialty I might need as an Assistant Corporation Counsel. So come March 8th, COVID happened, and there was anticipated reduction in revenue, so that position just got cut. It wasn't my request, it was just something the administration did because of the anticipated reduction in revenue. So I'm asking, that's what, most of the percentage is getting that position back in here. The other portion in salaries that is a little bit of an increase is, we have a workers' comp position that last year was a $39,000 position. It is currently unfilled. We are interviewing, in fact, there was an interview today, there was an interview, I think, two or three weeks ago. That position goes up to $50,000, so that's an $11,000 increase. It may not be used, just so the counsel knows, if we find somebody that has litigation experience, legal secretary, paralegal-type experience, then we can offer up to the 50 is the hope. If we get somebody who's just very competent and willing to learn, it would probably be more towards the 40, which is what it was in the past. But we are hoping to get somebody that does a lot more than just submitting some paperwork that deals only with workers' comp. We need more of a law firm atmosphere, somebody that can take many tasks from the law firm. So that's really, the increase for the salaries is mostly just asking for what, to go back to fiscal year 2020. If you want to take it by a little section, I can stop there, and we can have questions, or I can go on to the next section.
You can finish your presentation. Attorney Remsley?
All right. Let's skip down to the third section, which is Claims and Damages. I think it makes more sense to take that second. Actually, it was probably my mistake as to the clerical error, what happened here. I actually have the notes. You have the judgments of $100,000, the unclassified items slash claims $150,000. I had circled both of those and changed to $300,000. The request was really intended to only be a $50,000 increase for judgments. The reason for that is just anticipated that we might have more judgments in the upcoming year. That got mistaken in that I was trying to change the 100 to 300. So it's not, it was just a clerical mistake, I was never requesting anything more than a $50,000 increase. Would also note that in the fiscal year 2021 budget request, I had that same $50,000 increase in there that, once again, was cut prior to coming to the council, so it's not a big change. We do have a few issues. For example, we recently resolved a case called Glicksmann, the Glicksmann's Trust. It was property taken by eminent domain. We had a settlement, there's still $50,000 remaining to be paid in that settlement. $25,000 must be paid in the next fiscal year, and the next 25 could be at any time after, but the idea is if we have extra money from that 50, we could pay $50,000 July 1 or close to it, and then the, I'm sorry, $25,000 July 1, and then the remaining 25 probably sometime around January 1, assuming we have some money left over in judgments. So that's one of the reasons for having a little extra in there. There's also an arbitration that is likely to take place in this calendar year, probably take place September, October, where we know we're going to get hit a little bit. It's called the IW Harding arbitration. The plaintiff is asking for a million and change. We think the claim is probably worth much significantly less than that, but we know we are going to owe some money on that, so that's another reason for the increase there. The next section is the Law Department expenses. Here, I recognize this is a significant increase from prior years, so I have a little bit more detailed presentation on that. We have an unusual number of cases. I'll get to that in just a minute, though. What is currently expended were approximately $300,000 to date on other professional services. So I've kind of broken them down to kind of identify what they are. The vast, well, about 100,000 of them are not even legal expenses. About 100,000 deal with IW Harding, the same case we just referenced before. That's the street skate that occurs outside a townhouse restaurant purchased in Bank Street. Just to give the counsel an idea, there was a, as I said, a million-dollar claim. I probably had a binder presented to me early in probably February 2020, larger than the size of the Fall River Code, in support of the plaintiff's claim for approximately $1 million. We had lost, shortly after that time, we lost our engineer, we lost our planner, we also lost the project manager for Beta, which is our own...
Attorney Remsley, could you speak into the mic?
I'm sorry, our project manager is Beta, and the main onsite daily project manager is also retired from his position. So we lost three of probably the most important witnesses for the city, and the documentation front was lacking. So, you know, basically, the Arcadis, which I think you might see on your list, that is, right now, $86,000 and change. That is simply an expert witness, who I hope and I believe is going to save this city much more than he's charged in this city in this case, because without Arcadis's involvement, it's, you know, as I said, it's a million-dollar case. Concavenal, that's about $11,000, almost $12,000, that's just an arbitrator. So that's not outside litigation as well. The only litigation fees associated with that is less than $9,000 for Steve Torres. So you're talking about $100,000 that are classified as other professional services, but less than 10 of that is actually attorney's fees on that. We have a decent-sized chunk from Clifford and Kenny. I'm sure most of you are familiar with Clifford and Kenny. Aside from what they do with HR issues, this is a union negotiation year. I think a majority of their bill is that, and I look back in 2018, it looks like their bill in 2018 was similar to what it is this year. I know they've been busy, I know they've been working, but I think a lot of it is the union negotiations. We have a bill from Attorney Renee Howieak, I think you're most aware that she does municipal hearings for the office. She also served as overflow during the COVID year, when we just had, overwhelmed in the Law Department. She gives this city a very favorable rate, and she was absolutely necessary in the past fiscal year. In the future, we expect her bill to decrease, because we now have an Assistant Corporation Counsel, Seth Aitken, so we expect that bill to come down. But the real reason why we're expecting a significant increase in that department is because we have two death cases in the city. In addition to the million-dollar IW Harding case, we have two officer-involved shootings. One is the Natal Lugo case, this is a shooting death on Airport Road. The city's involved, I'm currently representing the city of Fall River, but there are 21 defendants in the case. There are three defense lawyers involved, myself being one of them, but we have outside counsel for, I think there's approximately 18 other defendants that this attorney is representing. They've sued any number of people, some of which we filed motions to dismiss to get some people out. For example, they've sued the city treasurer. I mean, it seems like they just sued almost anybody they could name. So that's going to be a significant case, it's just getting started, it's only going to get worse as far as attorney's fees. The second officer involved shooting involved actually a taser, where an individual was tased, walked out of the building under his own control, was put into the back of a police car, and then, I believe, about 10 minutes later passed away, after EMS involvement. So it's a pretty significant case. We felt the need to get somebody highly specialized, we got somebody highly recommended. This case, depositions have started, but it's going to be, it's going to be a legal cost associated with that. You know, I've only been with the city for, you know, less than a year and a half now, but I've asked around, like, Mr. Howieak has been there for, I think, over 20 years, and he said he can't remember the last time he had a death case, and now we have two of them at the same time. So that's the reason for the request.
Counselor in seat three, Counsel Kilby.
With that presentation, just some of the questions I was going to ask have been answered, thank you, Ellen. And I think you're doing Yonkers work for the city, I really, I really do.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I think your caseload is big.
We're busy. The addition of Seth is really going to help as far as getting back to people much more promptly. Like other department heads, we just need to prioritize, but we hope to be able to get back sooner to people.
So after all you said, a simple question is the adjuster that you're looking for? The workers' comp adjuster?
We're trying.
I think, I'm sorry, I think that would free up a lot of manpower with the right person.
Agreed.
Because these cases, as you know, these cases, close to 90% of these cases get settled. And if you have a good person there, maybe even a retired attorney, or someone who worked in the insurance industry negotiating, an insurance adjuster, I think would do Yonkers' work in your office and would free up, you know, others in your office, so. I would, obviously, we can't increase the budget, correct, Mr. President?
They can.
Right, they can, exactly. So these are budget deliberations, so I would request, I don't know if I have to say it, I'm sure Mary's taking notes, but after doing it informal, but I would ask that Mr. Remsley get more support in his office, and anything he can do to free up other attorneys in his office to focus on this litigation, and, you know, and handle some of the smaller tasks like negotiation, probably would be very valuable to you. With that, I yield.
Thank you. And so to Counsel Kilby's point, Attorney Remsley, so have you ever done, I know your time is limited, but has there ever been any research done in terms of what other communities of this size have comparable staff and financial resources in other communities that, like of a Springfield, or a Brockton, or a New Bedford, that is large like Fall River, a gateway city? What does their law department look like? Do you have, I mean, I know that's off the cuff, but I wasn't sure, it looks like you might even have that.
I anticipated that question here. I have a comparison with Fall River, with New Bedford, and Brockton, and just for example, Fall River right now, and this is with the brand-new addition of Mr. Aitken, we have three lawyers. I'm full-time, and both Assistant Corporation Counselors are part-time. And this is all just from looking at the budgets, that the fiscal year '22 budgets for New Bedford and Brockton, so if there is, it's just because I'm just pulling these documents off the internet. I don't know these people personally. And New Bedford has nine attorneys, four full-time, five part-time. Brockton has seven attorneys, they are all full-time. Their staffing is, Brockton is $704,000 and change, New Bedford is $644,000 and change, ours is significantly less than that. The legal expenses, it's not a, it's a difficult comparison to make, but for example, just the legal department expenditures. Brockton, they include a lot in their budget that we don't have, such as insurance and things of that nature, but I've done my best to try to isolate what would be a fair comparison. I have Brockton at approximately $1.7 million. New Bedford's at just slightly over $1 million in their law department, but they don't include any amount for claims and judgments. So, you know, I'm requesting a grand total of $300,000. So the fair comparison, if you want to compare it to the million dollar for New Bedford, would be to deduct $300,000 from Fall River's proposed budget. So the point is, we're well below that. I did also note, which was interesting, it was in Brockton, they even have a listing of what they pay, I believe, paralegals. From memory, I believe they pay their paralegal over $80,000 annually.
Do you know how many paralegals they have?
I think they just have one, but I think they also have a workers' comp clerk who makes approximately 72, 73. Give me one minute, I'll find it for you.
So I guess that, I appreciate that homework, too, Attorney Remsley, but I guess it's fair to say that your department, in comparison to other gateway cities that are in our neighbors, we're severely under budget in comparison to other gateway cities.
I think that's correct, and that's even including with the requested increases.
Okay, so to Attorney Kilby's point, I mean, we can't add to the budget, but, I mean, I personally feel that, you know, with the caseload that you have, and the department that you have, and the workload that you have, that if additional resources are needed for you to be able to reduce the burden in caseload that you have, and to give you additional support, I'm sure this counsel would be open to having a discussion with you about what support we can give you as our Corporation Counsel to make sure that the city's adequately represented. I mean, I know that there's been some individuals who have reached out to some counselors who have been concerned with the response time on claims. Now granted, that certainly isn't always your fault, and there's a process to it, but, you know, there, we have a responsibility, and I think that we're severely under budget in that department in comparison to other communities.
If I may quickly address that, I would say claims were probably, well, I think it is our fault. I mean, it's a staffing issue, but, I mean, the blame does lie on the Law Department. We have been delinquent with our responses, and that was the one thing that, when Mr. Aitken started with us, I had him prioritize, and I think the citizens will find that they're going to be a much more prompt response. I think he's gotten to many of them already in this first two weeks. I think he's replied to at least a dozen, and I think the residents, even rather than just get a general denial, they're getting a more lengthy response as to why it's denied. So, you know, nobody's going to be happy being denied, but I think they're going to get a better explanation. So that was one of the things why we prioritize with the new hire.
Thank you, Attorney Remsley. Counselor in seat two, Counsel Dion.
Yeah, obviously, I mean, there's things we can't control in pending litigation and future litigation, there's nothing we can do about that. You know, we just need to do what we need to do. Though it seems a little miniscule compared to that, the outsourcing that's necessary, how will that number be affected? Because I imagine it will be reduced. If you can bring on the workers' comp claim adjuster, and with the new Assistant Corporation Counsel, I would imagine that number would be affected.
It will, it definitely will. I will say, from what we're currently looking at, it wouldn't actually be a hugely significant reduction. I mean, for example, both death cases would have to be outsourced. Even if we had another full-time, you would really need a full-time trial attorney that's not tasked with the day-to-day operations of the office. And, you know, you have 1983 claims involved, it gets very complicated, so you want somebody who's highly recommended for those two. So those two would probably have to be farmed out anyway. You know, some of the work sent to, the arbitration, the IW Harding arbitration, I tried to handle that myself. I handled it myself until about a month or two, and I just realized that, you know, I couldn't take a month out of my schedule to prep up for that. So that's something that probably would have been handled, but right now, we're only talking about, you know, less than $10,000. It's a better response for the public records requests, the open meeting law violations, the request from the City Council, more prompt, the claims. Renee Howieak's, her bill will be reduced significantly, I think, as a result of having the new hire. We know things are coming down the pipeline, we hope they don't, but we anticipate certain things are already happening. I think the biggest challenge right now is just to retain what we have. I mean, with, of course, we're trying to get the claims adjuster in there, or somebody who can be a legal secretary slash claims adjuster, that'd be great. But right now, I don't think we would need a fourth lawyer just yet. Let's just work with what we have, try to keep what we have.
So in essence, we're just, we're definitely just, we're definitely creating a well-oiled office compared to what it's been and how much you've struggled up until this point.
We're trying, I just want to keep what we have. We've got a good thing going right now, I think. I think Mr. Aitken, I mean, Mr. Howieak is indispensable. I think Mr. Aitken is a great first impression, I think he's going to be great for the city, so we just need to make sure they stay there rather than take jobs elsewhere.
Thank you very much. Then I yield.
Any other questions? Counselor in seat eight, Counsel Pereira.
I do want to go back to the claims. Could you tell us now, I mean, I received a call from a woman who put in a claim for elderly parents in August. The claim was only for 800, well, not only, but it was for $800, and they are seniors and don't have a whole lot of expendable money. You know, they managed to get their automobile repaired, but still haven't heard. Has called offices and no one has responded to her, and I'm not sure what office she called, but, you know, has reached out. What are we looking at as far as a timeline of being paid from the time somebody puts in a claim to the time that they hear a response, whether it's approved or it's denied? How long of a span of time do you think? Is it six months?
No.
Would it be?
The policy we have, we're attempting to put in place, and I've spoken with Mr. Aitken about this, is that every claim that comes in should get a response within 30 days. It should be a yes, you know, a denial, or a request for additional time for, I mean, for an investigation. Not every single one requires additional time, but they should have a response within 30 days. I mean, that's what I would expect as a citizen, you know, a resident that makes a complaint. They should know, hey, there are some things that will require some time.
Well, it's ironic, we've talked about this, I've been here for a while. We talked about this once before with another Assistant Corporation Counsel, who then became Corporation Counsel, and it was a claim gets denied if it's the first time someone's car gets damaged, because we didn't know about it. because we didn't know about it. I thought that was pretty ludicrous, to be honest with you. But is it that if it's, let's say, a pothole on the main street that people go back and forth, that then we should have noticed that? Or if we have, well, we haven't gotten a claim yet, so now that we have this claim, we're not going to pay it, but if anybody else puts in a claim on this same hole, now we already know about it? Does that make sense to you?
No, I mean, you have to understand, I mean, I think most people don't understand that the city is not strictly liable, liable for any incidents that occur in the city, whether it's operating your vehicle, or, you know, tripping on something on the sidewalk. So I think most people, when they submit the claim, they do just that. They just say they hit a pothole, and they want the, they want the city to pay for it. That's not what the law provides for. Now, I don't want to get in the weeds as to, you know, every little thing that has to be met to get there, but, I mean, the city's not strictly liable for what happens to anybody's vehicle.
So there is a whole process. But I am glad to hear that it'll be 30 days, that they'll get some type of a response, at least an acknowledgement that we've even received the claim. And I have to tell you that I was very impressed with Attorney Atkins. I had a meeting with the two of you on issues that I wanted to discuss, and he did go with me to a meeting to listen to some members of the community for like a hearing tour. And he did a phenomenal job. I think, I don't know if all of my colleagues have met him or not, but I think definitely will be impressed. He's very articulate, very sharp. He's a very good attorney. So that was a good pick. I don't know who picked him. It was you, the mayor, but it was a good pick. So thank you very much. With that, I yield.
Any other questions? Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadim.
Thank you, Mr. President. Attorney Rumsey, just in terms of the workers' comp, do you know how many outstanding cases that we have and how many you think we could potentially settle? I know there are some that are just not settable, are able to be settled. You know, obviously, there were a couple of deaths that took place, and there's no way that we're going to be able to.
For workers' comp?
Yeah.
That's, Mr. Howieak would give you a more accurate answer to that. He did give me a list of some of the things he's working on, so I'm just going to read through it real fast here.
Okay.
Looks like we have approximately 30 active workers' comp cases. Active meaning that they are, we're paying people weekly checks that are now working. It's also medical-only claims, likely over, have over 500 of those.
Okay. So, and I would say, I support this position. Just, you know, having intimate knowledge with regards to how costly, you know, workers' comp can be, and if you're not on top of it, the amount of money a municipality pays with not challenging some things, whether it's an independent medical review to see if they're able to come back, or, you know, trying to settle something so that they're not staying on the books because these individuals are obviously taking up positions because we're not backfilling their positions while they're not working. So it takes away from the resources that departments have. So I think at the, you know, at the very least, the $50,000 is, will pay for itself if the individual is aggressive with trying to, you know, work on these claims and settle some of the items. Just overall, in terms of the budget, I've said this before, I think your department has been underfunded for quite some time. My standpoint, you know, when you're looking at a law department, I would say half of a percent should be set aside for at least some type of legal services. And if we look at that at $350 million, we're talking about $1.7 million. And, you know, that's, to me, wouldn't include your judgments or your claims. I think that would be separate. So when you take that, you know, as just the rule of thumb that I would like to say, you know, you're at 1.7 versus roughly $900,000 that you're putting forward. So substantially under where I think your department should be. I told you that I support some of the initiatives that would come back to try to get you as much resources as you possibly need to make sure that, you know, the city is covered in a whole host of things, right? And I think folks don't necessarily recognize the amount of work and energy and effort that is needed by your office, even on a day-to-day basis, review of policies, HR law, negotiations, claims, settlements, things of that nature. So I give kudos to the department. I support the budget. You know, if there was, if there was more in the budget, I'd support that because I think it's important to have it. So with that, I've got no issues on this budget. I yield.
Counselor in seat eight, Counselor Pereira.
I want to piggyback on what my colleague in seat number one said about the workman comp cases. You know, there are some communities that have investigators to make sure that people that are on compensation and say, you know, they can't do something, there's a back, blah, 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 and then you go by the house, and, or they're at the gym lifting weights, or they're roofing something, that if we had an investigator that caught stuff like that, then you're not, you know, you get rid of some of those claims too. And I know that other communities have done that. I don't know that this adjuster will do that, but that may be something you want to think about on cases that are older. I mean, we have compensation cases where people no longer live in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And that's what I heard before. I don't know if those have been settled or not, but how are we checking on someone who lives in Arizona or Florida? How are we checking?
That's our hope, is that this new person that we hire will help with investigations, not just paperwork.
Okay, good. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Anything further? Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
Just a quick question. Do you anticipate, so you have, you added a new person. Do you anticipate any increases in just the other miscellaneous costs, such as office supplies and mileage, you know, things like that? Do you see any increases?
I don't think we had any mileage last fiscal year due to COVID. I mean, I was there every single day, but conferences were canceled, and we weren't going to court.
Right.
Everything was Zoom. So obviously, that will go up, but that's relatively insignificant to the rest of the budget.
Right.
The biggest cost there are subscriptions, and that's Westlaw. It seems to raise their prices every single year, and it's necessary in an apartment our size. I mean, that's the big cost there.
The only reason why I ask is because they all pretty much were carried over the same number, and I figured since you had an increase in, at least one increase in personnel.
Mrs. Sahadi may correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we had to adjust that previously because we knew that we were just going to be over budget on that. So we're where we're expected to be for next year.
Okay. That's all I had. I agree with many others who say where, you know, the numbers are in line. You do have a lot of coming your way, you know, soon. So with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Anything further of the law department? Hearing none. Thank you, Attorney Rumsey.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Rumsey.
Mr. Kenny, planning.
So planning begins on page 247 of your budget document.
Thanks, Ellen.
And Mr. Kenny is responsible for planning and licensing. Those two departments are together. And as we indicated earlier, or yesterday when we were talking about the vacant positions, Mr. Kenny has requested an assistant city planner that is currently vacant, but is included, is funded in this budget document. Mr. Kenny.
Thank you, folks. Hello, everybody. Nice to see you. As Mary said, my department's responsible for planning and for licensing, but to be a little bit more precise, I think you should understand that the functions that we are responsible for include staffing the zoning board of appeals, the planning board, the site plan review committee, the conservation commission, the historical commission, the historic district commission, and the licensing board. So it's a broad range of functions that we are responsible for, and to carry out those functions, we have a staff of me, and we have two clerical people that do primarily planning and zoning, and then we have one person who does primarily licensing. And if you'll indulge me just to answer the same question that was put to the law department by way of comparing what happens in other cities, I'll tell you what goes on in New Bedford to handle those same functions. In New Bedford, there's a city planner, an assistant city planner, two staff planners, a community and historic preservation planner, an assistant project manager, a director of environmental stewardship, an environmental project manager, a conservation agent, an administrative coordinator, a director of licensing, and a financial assistant. Two. I think you see there's a significant difference in the staffing that's available. I think Fall River's behind the curve on this significantly. I think when we're understaffed like this, it puts a lot of stress on the people that are doing the work. It makes it very difficult to respond to citizen inquiries and to handle our functions in a timely manner. And I think that's, that's all I have to say about that. We're in a difficult situation, and we could use some help.
Okay. So how have you articulated, you clearly articulated that in your budget that is before us, or are you going to be needing additional resources on top of what's before us right now, Mr. Kenny?
Well, I think the budget is slim. The request is slim, and it was arrived at, we were pretty much told not to expect much help. And if that's not the case, then I'd like to ask for some more help. I think one thing that comes to mind immediately is that it would be important to have a conservation agent. I handle the conservation function. I'm not a, I'm not an environmental scientist. I'm not an environmentalist of any kind. I've had to learn over the past, well, my original term of office here, and now in my second term, I've learned a lot about Westlaw, and I feel pretty comfortable with it now, but it would make more sense to have somebody else responsible for just that function. I think that the assistant planner position that we've asked for is very important so that we can have somebody maybe take charge of maybe the site plan review function, which seems always to be running behind schedule because of the other demands on our time and the way that the work ebbs and flows in that, in that area. So if the assistant planning position were approved, I would hopefully assign that work to the assistant planner as his or her main responsibility. I think that the historic preservation area is something that Fall River has a wealth of opportunity, and without the staff to advance the agenda, that would be important to taking advantage of our historical assets, we miss opportunities there as well.
So, Mr. Kenny, I know a couple of councils want to speak, and I want to acknowledge Counselor in seat one shortly, and then Counselor Lee and Counselor Pereira, but, you know, you're not the first department head so far in the last couple of days that has come back to us that says, you need more. And I don't think that, and just speaking from my own perspective, right, I don't think people recognize the importance of a city planning in a city of this magnitude. I mean, the planning department deals with developers that are in and out of Fall River, in and out of different parts of the area. We're talking about new construction. We're talking about business development. We're talking about all the work that you do with conservation and licensing. It's literally like the biggest department that helps roll through construction. And I just personally think, again, your department, because you've articulated this on more than one occasion to us, that you need more help. And I don't know where the hesitation is to give more help. I mean, we're sitting on $730,000 in unused in this budget, because I calculated it yesterday in other professional services. It's almost a million bucks. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadim.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just in regards to the FY '22 budget, have we begun to look at the fee schedule for planning, conservation, things of that nature?
You mean, like for filing fees and site?
Yeah.
I'll give you the same answer that the building inspector gave. If I had the time, I would do that.
Okay. So quite frankly, I don't think that's an acceptable answer. I mean, we've had that conversation before, you and I, so, I mean, to hear that we haven't looked at it, and I'll throw it to my colleagues, we're leaving a ton of money on the table. We talk about revenues. Want to talk about a structural deficit? You want to talk about a fiscal cliff? The only way that you're going to eliminate that is looking at revenues. So if you want to do a filing fee for a single-family home, it's $300. You want to do a filing fee for a 70-unit, it's $300. Okay? So I'll just quickly go through my recommendations. I don't know that I support an assistant planner. I would support a conservation agent. I think, I think it's needed. I agree with the planner that that's what we need to do. You know, when we start looking at site plan review, no, let me take a step back. So my recommendation is that we review and we work all the rules and regulations for planning, conservation, site plan review, and we work with the fee schedule. I think ordinance is able to do that. We can do that as a council to start looking at this. You go to other communities, you know, filing fees are anywhere from $1,000 to $2,500. So right off the bat, again, leaving money on the table. This is not something that's unique to the city of Fall River. But the $300 that we're talking about, you've got to go to five different departments for these site plan reviews, right? You've got to go to fire, you've got to go to building, you've got to go to water, you've got to go to sewer, and you've got to go to engineering. The $300, the fee is supposed to cover the costs associated with providing and reviewing these, the applications that have been submitted. When you look at the amount of hours that are put into it, $300 doesn't cover one department, let alone five departments. So I think right off the bat, we should be looking to increase that. Site plan review, I don't think it should be with the committee. I think site plan review needs to be with the planning board. We need to have it with the planning board. There needs to be specific times and deadlines that are established. We should have a 14-day turnaround time. We shouldn't be waiting. There are folks that are waiting months, months, to get their site plan review completed. Another cost-saving measure is eliminate the engineer. We do not need a city engineer. We are paying $90,000 for a city engineer to review plans. Every other community does peer reviews. They have a list of engineering service companies that are on a list to provide engineering review plans. The best part about it is the applicant pays for it. So we would save $90,000 right off the bat. So, I mean, there's a lot that needs to go. I understand that there are plans, but I think, again, we need to go through our departments. We need to review the processes that we have in place and rework it. And I think a lot of it begins with looking at our rules and regulations and clearly outlining them and making sure that they're conducive to what we need, but they're also business-friendly. So that's just my statements. I don't want to belabor the point on the situation, but if we were coming back before us for a conservation agent, I'd support it. If we had a fee schedule that has been reviewed, I would support some stuff, but not even having to hear that if I had the time, then I'd have a fee schedule. So we're hurting for money. I'm hearing from a department head that he needs support and services, but we're not going to look at the fee schedules to be able to justify adding additional bodies to the departments. Doesn't make sense to me. With that, I yield.
Mr. Kenny, what is the, what do you think a good turnaround time would be to possibly look at the fee schedule?
Let me just say this. When I started this position, it was at the very beginning of the pandemic. I was here entirely by myself in that department for about four months. When I came back, my lead secretary, due to family obligations, was gone for, oh, I don't know, four or five months. So I'd never been until the last two or three months fully staffed. So I think it's self-evident why there's not been time to do things like put together a fee schedule. As far as turnaround time for the site plan review, as Counselor mentions, there are several different departments that this process involves, and each of them has their own constraints as to when they can turn things around. I think the ordinance provides for 14 days. I don't think that that's realistic in the long term because different projects are different levels of complexity. Right now, we're certainly running probably 30 days on average to get these things through. With more staff, we could probably bring it down to what the ordinance provides for.
Thank you. Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
Thank you. Many, many times we are listening to, from department to department, it's usually the same conversation. And we are compared to other towns, and New Bedford was brought up. And what's, you know, what's sort of overlooked in the conversation, just having this conversation prior to the meeting starting, is that, you know, our income, our tax base, people who live in the city, a lot of people on fixed incomes, it's hard to afford the cost that it would take in order to increase all these departments, you know? So when we have these meetings, a lot of the taxpayers are watching these meetings, figuring out if we're going to increase, what are we going to increase, what are we not going to increase? to increase, things like that, fees, things like that. So I'm going to ask just a few questions regarding that, and just, I mean, just so we can get a figure as to what you were looking for in your department. Overall, I think we're at $235,305 for the total in the planning part of the budget, correct?
You've got to watch out, I'm sorry. Planning and licensing are within the same jurisdiction and they separate them out for budget purpose. Is that right, Mrs. Sahadi?
Yes, so the planning department, the planning department has $248,000 worth of salaries and $28,000 worth of expenses. Where licensing is just under $50,000, $49,622 of salaries and $1,250 of expenses. So the total planning and licensing combined is $327,582.
And what number do you feel, if you were to get what you say you need, assistant planner, conservation agent, maybe some other staff as well, where do you feel that figure is going to land?
Well, I'm not really prepared to give you a figure on that tonight. I can certainly come back with some estimates.
People need to know, and I've said this before to Mrs. Sahadi and in other areas, that people who are invested in this, that have to see their fees and their taxes raised, what immediate improvements and what long-term improvements? And you don't have to do a long list, but what are they going to tangibly see as what they're investing in? If you were to get those.
How do I sell this to the taxpayers?
I mean, I think people want to know what they're paying for, right?
Absolutely. I think the bottom line is quality of life in the city of Fall River. I think that the planning function is critical, the site plan review process, the conservation process, the attention to historical preservation. All of these things build a healthier, more attractive community with more amenities that becomes more attractive for people who want to live and work here. And a lot of the things we have to do, protecting environment, the physical environment, the social environment, the cultural environment of the city, and anything that we can do to enhance those aspects helps us all.
And so we're struggling in all those areas because we haven't funded the city planner office properly? Is that the?
I think that's the bottom line, the city planning, again, and all the other functions that are part of that operation. I think the answer is yes.
Okay. And I think that's, again, I think that's, it's a message that needs to kind of get out there, because when we hear fees are going to increase and things are going to increase, and we never see things fixed, we never see, we see some things fixed. I'm not going to say never, I shouldn't say never, but the quality of life in Fall River keeps on getting more expensive, and sometimes they're not seeing what they're investing in. I would make that clear.
No, I certainly understand, and part of your job is to watch the taxpayers' pocketbook, absolutely.
Yeah, every penny.
And I will say, Counselor Kadim is right, that it's important, to the extent that we can, to have some of these expenses passed on to the applicants, the proponents of these projects. I agree that that's something that we should certainly investigate further. And over the past three or four years, the department with Mr. Roth and with myself, we've actually gone down that path, advertising, for example, for zoning and planning board hearings, that used to come out of our budget. And now the proponents pay for this. If you apply for zoning, for zoning change or variance, you're going to pay the Herald News, not me, okay? And the planning board, if a hearing has to be held, the people that don't want the relief from the planning regulations, they pay. Conservation the same. And that wasn't always the case. That's only been the case in the last two and a half, three years. So that's a step in the right direction. I think Counselor Kadim envisions that we can do that in other areas as well, and I think that's worth pursuing.
One of the things that I, and I'm very, you know, compared to some of the other people here, I'm very limited in my city council experience, but.
So am I.
But I learned the value of the site plan review very quickly. That was one of the very first things that we got hit with, right? Even before COVID, we were all down in the South End of Fall River, looking at these properties that people really got, they really got kind of worked on.
I think I'm familiar with the neighborhood you're talking about.
They got worked over, let's just put it that way, that they got worked over by a.
That, by the way, was not just a site plan review issue, that was a conservation commission issue, and you have to question perhaps some of the judgments that were made at the time that those developments were allowed to go forward.
Right. But having a quality site plan review now, going forward, would deter some of those things from happening, if not most of them or all of them.
It certainly would, and I think also having a conservation agent who not only can guide the conservation commission in making the proper decisions, but who's also available to go out and inspect and enforce. That's one of the big problems that we have. The conservation commission can approve a project and put all sorts of lovely special conditions in there to make sure, you know, yes, you can go forward with your project, but you've got to follow certain restrictions so you don't damage the wetland areas and so forth. That's all well and good, but who's going to go out and watch? Who's available to inspect and to follow up and to make sure that the rules that have been set forth and the permit to do the work are followed? And we're lacking in that area. That's an important.
Are you in any level of agreement about Council seat one's suggestion about the engineer, or is that something that you feel is necessary to have?
I think on a daily basis, it's important to have engineering capability in the building. I run into engineering-related questions on a daily basis. And so I'm not quite ready to dismantle the engineering department.
So I weigh the, you know, we're in this position to weigh the options as to if we are going to look to see an increase in one area, where can we decrease in another?
I understand.
So when you make the suggestions that we need to increase more here, you know, it's on us to figure out, and also, I believe, in administration's purview, to look to see where we can offset those increases. So with that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in Seat Eight, Councilor Pereira.
I really would like to stick to the site plan review and also some of what you said about the historic commission and the historic district commission. Those should be merged, number one, so it'd be best for you to work on. I agree, we need a Priscilla Chapman back here, who is one of the best conservation people that we had. But site plan review should not be coming in via email, and everybody looks at the email when they have a chance to do it. I said that the site plan review, I put in a resolution about that in ordinance, where I think that site plan review, everybody needs to sit at the table, whether it's the second Wednesday of every month, there needs to be a consistent, so everybody's there, and that person leaves with a list of what it is they have to do. We had also said that if somebody built something new, they had to have some green space, there was plant a tree. I think that's, you know, when we had the tree farm and down the South End, and you had people that were wanting to do that. They put the trees all on Brayton Avenue, and it was John Silver who was watering them with water from his house. And I think you're right, it's the quality of life, it's the environment, it's the beautification aspect, but I think that the site plan review clearly needs to be looked at, because it's not working the way, and I was a proponent for putting the site plan review together several years back, but those need to be dealt with. I know that you spoke about how many people New Bedford has in their planning office. Do you happen to know what their salary ranges are?
Yes, I do.
Could you share that with me?
Do you want me to read through that whole list?
Well, just give me a few of them. Like, what does their planner make? What does their assistant, two assistant planners make?
And again, this comes from the website.
Right, right.
So I can't swear on a stack of bibles. It's on the internet, it must be true, right? City planner, $86,625 to 108 is the range. They put the range that's available. Assistant planner, 68 and change to 85 and change, that's the range. Staff planner, 50 to 63. Preservation, community and historic preservation planner, 50 to 63,000. Assistant project manager, 48 to 60. Director of environmental stewardship, that would basically be the conservation, head of the conservation commission agency, 81 to 102.
That's good.
Okay, I could go on, but.
I know.
You got the gist of it.
We got the gist, we don't need to go on. But I just find, you know, I hear everybody coming before us saying they need more money. How much of this money can we use into the budget? Because I was told that it couldn't go to salaries. Is that true? Is that not true? Can the CARES Act, can the Opera, what is that?
The CARES money that we have included in the past would have been to cover eligible expenses, which for the most part are overtime issues and/or the health department.
COVID-related. The CARES was COVID-related. Does the CARES Act have the essential workers' extra pay can come from there?
That's not the CARES Act. So that's going to be, that's going to be the American Rescue.
Okay.
So the American Rescue has provided us with the ability to fund the budget with a concept called loss revenue. I mean, there are a couple of other areas within that particular bill that was signed by the president, but the primary one in terms of a revenue source within the budget will allow us to include a category, if you will call it that, of loss revenue going forward from this fiscal year '22 out to '25, or the end of '24, basically.
Okay. So by '25, the city needs to have the money to keep everybody not to expand the budget, because we have money now, and then in two years, we're 9C cuts, because we don't have the money. I think that's, there's a balance there.
There is always a balance, that is correct. There is always a balance. You know, Counselor Kadim, you know, has a point with regard to the fees. We've talked about the fees in the past. As you know, something as simple as the parking fees were a little bit of a challenge to get passed through this council, but certainly the building department yesterday, Mr. Hathaway spoke about his fees being on the low side in comparison to other communities, and certainly Mr. Kenny is telling you the same with regard to his fees that he currently has in terms of what he's able to collect.
Well, let me ask you that about fees. I thought the fee, if you had large items in front of your house, or mattresses or whatever, that.
And there's another perfect example, right?
It was a $300 fee, a $300 fine, right?
Yes, I believe so.
But now they knocked it down to $100. Who knocked that down? It's in ordinance for 300.
I'm not sure, Counselor.
And now I hear, $100, I paid $100. I said, "Ooh, you paid $100? You got a break, because it's 300." So when did that happen?
I'm not sure.
I mean, people can't be doing that either. Here we're saying we need more money.
Same is true with.
And we should raise some of the fees, and nobody wants to raise fees, and I think Council Lee says it, you know? We have such a disconnect. You have people that are coming in, buying homes top dollar, and of course, they're going to boost up the rents, and then you have some of our residents who, you know, I got a call today, a couple, $750 they paid for rent. Somebody from Boston came in, bought the house, their rent's going up to $1,000. They can't afford $1,000. So, you know, we're in that situation of understanding that if we raise revenue, we're going to get more money, we're going to be able to do better things, but we're also living in a community where we have a lot of people who are not making the money to be able to pay certain bills. It's just a real tough situation. But a lot of these fees that my colleague in seat number one talked about are, you know, people who are building can afford, they're going to pay, they want to do this. I mean, even with the price of lumber going up, the average house is what, $36,000 more in the cost of lumber to build a home today? But, you know, I agree that the site plan review has got to be tweaked a little.
And if I may just let you know, we have applied for a grant for hiring of a consultant to rewrite the whole site plan review process, to write some regulations for it that had never been written, and to review the standards that could be put into the regulations or into the ordinance that would make it a lot clearer what developers and builders should expect will be or won't be approved, and so we're hopeful that that grant will be approved sometime in the fall. And if it is, then I think that we'll be able to put together a much more satisfactory site plan review process.
And if it's not, if that grant is not approved, and we're not going to get a consultant, maybe we get planning, engineering, you know, the building department, all the inspectors, and, you know, put them together and come up with, what are they seeing? What's working with them? What's not working with them? You know, people are building, and you need to wait to get an electrical inspector, and I'm waiting two weeks for the electrical inspector to come. Maybe my plumber's going to go do a job somewhere else, and then that's putting me back, so there needs to be more of, I mean, are we doing things on a cell phone? Do we, can we, I mean, for somebody to have to call the office to get an appointment for the inspector who's there, who's now going to come back, well, you got to call the office to get an appointment. Why can't the inspector make an appointment right there and put it on your phone, so you know where you're going every day? Like, there's some type of system like that, I think, might be helpful. And if we want to clean up litter, then you got to start fining people that are littering, because I would venture to say that the majority of people that live in Fall River are good homeowners, they take care of their property. And then you have a small percentage that ruin it for everybody else. Well, go after that small percentage. Go after them! But then we hate to do things in Fall River, because, oh, we're afraid somebody's going to come and mess it up. So what? We don't get nice things because we're afraid of the people that are going to come and mess it up? That just boggles my mind, you know? I think we have more. I met with the attorneys about, Counselor Pelletier and I had put in an ordinance about trash cans at some of these drive-throughs, because you want a good quality of life. And in meeting with them, they said, you know, to give another ordinance that we don't have anybody to go after, then why don't we just say, "Let's enforce the litter." So businesses that are dirty, then they get fined and they have to clean it up. And, you know, when you look at, I'll give you an example, when you look at the Cumberland Farms that have been built in Fall River, and you look, not Cumberland Farms, CVSs that are built in Fall River, and you look at the one in Westport. Westport has, go by, it's pretty. There's grass islands between parking places, there's vegetation, and those are the things that site plan review needs to put. And then it helps with stormwater, because they have more drainage. And I agree that I think we do need an engineer. If you're going to pay an engineer and go out and get people all the time, I'd like to have our own engineer, and I agree with the planner. I understand that we can put more money into the budget this year that we haven't, but you've got to be cognizant of what's going to happen in a couple of years, and how are we going to maintain this? What revenue sources are going to come in? You know, where do we get revenue without going into the taxpayer's pocket? I mean, last night, my colleague in seat number two said, "Billboards, billboards." That's a great idea, but we tried that, and the state only approved one. One! So what are we going to do with one? Just, I agree, Mr. Kenny, and I've worked with you on a couple of projects, and I know how overwhelmed you are with doing a good job, and I think that you're doing the best you can, and I appreciate it as I do the people in your office.
I'm blessed with a wonderful staff. Thank you for mentioning that.
Brittany and Pat are very good, and Kerry.
And Chris, I don't know if you've dealt with Chris at all, but very nice.
With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor in Seat Six, Counselor Peckham.
All right, I know this isn't the DPW. I just want to touch upon one point of information that Counsel Pereira brought up. Mrs. Sahadi, is it possible to find out if the fee for heavy items went from 300 to 100?
Well, I believe Counselor Pereira is talking about the violation.
Oh, well, yeah, well.
Right, because the fee, I believe, is still three items for $12.
Yes, I'll correct myself.
So you're looking for the violation.
The violation. Because under ordinance, if it does stay 300, and somebody knocked it down to 100 bucks, I would like to know who that was that decided to take it upon themselves to skip ordinance and change the violation fee.
We will be hitting revenue tonight, too, so you can certainly ask that question.
Yeah, I think that's, it's definitely a question worth asking, so.
I'll ask.
I appreciate it. Thank you, with that, I yield.
Anything further on planning? Mr. Kenny, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kenny, thank you.
Thanks, folks.
Treasurer Collector, Treasurer Collector's office, under Financial Services, that starts on page 163. 163. Mr. Shakman? Mr. Shakni.
Mr. President, can I just clarify that? I got a call from a constituent that told me she had $100 fine that she had to pay. And I thought it was 300. She said, no, it was 100. So I didn't, you know, that's the call that I got, maybe-
Councilor Pereira, minimum housing, though. Do we know who issued the, minimum housing? Who?
Who issues it?
Who issued the fine?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know either.
I don't know who. I thought it was DCM, but I don't know.
Well, Mr. Shakni, welcome back before the City Council. Any questions for Collector Treasurer? If you want to just give us a brief overview, Mr. Shakni, about how your department's doing, what you need from us.
I think we're doing pretty good with what we got. I'm actually requesting less money on the expense side. I went through the budget and just tried to trim it out as much as I can. We don't really spend tons of money on supplies, or travel, or conferences, or anything like that. Some, we do have some collection costs, but we, if we need to use that, we will add that on to the bill that we're, we're dealing with. So we try to recover as much as we can with that. Overall, considering we had a pandemic, I think we're doing pretty good with collections and just working with people that are having trouble in payment plans and explaining what they need to do, and just try to help people as best we can.
Questions? Councilor in seat three, Councilor Kilby.
Mr. Shakni, I think you're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Definitely getting no complaints in your office.
Thanks.
And, you know, so it's been, what, about five, six years now?
I've been the treasurer since last year, and I was the collector for, I think, like three. It's kind of blurred together at this point.
Yeah, so keep up the good work, my friend. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Please, departments start on page 166, if anyone-
Yep, page 163, 165 is where it all begins. Treasurer Collector.
Mr. President, just, just to try to streamline this, I mean, it's financial ones, I don't necessarily have a whole lot. I just got one question for the auditors, I mean, for the assessors' office, and then one question for-
Under Financial Services?
CFO. So can we just find out for the other, the other folks, so that they don't have to stick around?
Yeah, so I was just, it looks like we're pretty much done with the collector. I was going to ask Ms. Argo to come down next, and then I was going to ask the assessors' office to come down right after, but we can bring them all down to the table now if the council wants to do that. Councilor Lee?
Just, just one, one quick question. During, during COVID, was there assistance from Baycoast Bank?
Yes, yeah, we're using Baycoast Bank now, and we're continuing to do that, free of charge, which is very nice of them. Anyone who wants to take their water bill, their excise tax bill, their real estate tax, personal property, vote, take your bill, go to Baycoast, you don't have to come in, go right to the drive-through.
So, so this is no longer COVID-related services, going to be consistent?
Yeah, there, people seem to like it, and it doesn't cost us any money, and it's another service for people to pay their bills, so we're happy with it.
Is the ability to do it online as well?
Yep, you can pay all your bills online.
Okay.
Pay by mail, we got the Dropbox downstairs, come on in.
Okay.
Lots of options.
Thank you, thank you, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Hearing no further questions, Councilor in seat one, two, Councilor Deon.
Yeah, I just have one question that just popped into my head. Does the, does the city retain any accounts with Baycoast?
We have some, yeah, we do have some bank accounts with, with Baycoast. We have the, so when someone goes and pays their bill at Baycoast, we have a city account that gets dropped right in. We have, we have a money market with them. I think we have one more.
The, the city does generally, right, to Councilor Deon's point, I think she's getting to, the city generally does spread out their, their banking to all, all of the banks.
Yeah, we have lots.
It's not all in one financial institution. They do, they do everything, like, you know, all the mechanics, Bank Five, they, right?
Yeah, we have, yeah, Rockland, Bristol County Savings Bank.
I was just thinking, in terms of them providing a service for us and us having accounts with them.
Right.
I would assume that, is there, is there any fee for maintaining that account?
No.
Nothing at all?
Nope.
Okay, thank you, I yield.
Thank you. I just got one question. I know there was some discussion that me and Mrs. Sahadi had about the deposit of the $33, $34 million that we received. Where did we put it, and are we getting interest on that?
We are getting interest. We, it was originally dropped in our central depository at Rockland, and we have it spread out. We have $10 million at Newbury Port Bank, we have $10 million at Bristol County Savings Bank, I believe.
It's Bristol County.
And we have, we have about $4 million still at Rockland, and I don't have it written down, but there's one more bank. It's, it's all recorded, I just don't-
So it wasn't all in one basket, you guys spread that out?
We, we did, and we actually did a lot of research as we knew this money was coming, so we could get the best interest rate.
So what are we looking at for an interest rate?
I think it was .45 was the best one.
Yeah, about a half a percent. .45 is about the best we could get.
And, and I know that is, that's a true struggle right now, to find, you would have never thought that we would have a tough time finding, an issue depositing $10 million into a bank, but the banks have so much cash right now, they don't even want the millions of dollars on their ledger.
That's correct.
Right? So, so, good work on that.
I have that problem all the time.
Good for you. Good for you. B. Trot's friend.
And, and we spread it out, so we have some of it in a little bit long-term CD. We've got some of it that we can get to it immediately. We're trying to invest it the best we can. It is $34 million, and so, you know, any, and the interest, interesting enough, does not go back to the eligible cost, so that interest will be a local receipt for the city.
Okay. Good work on that, guys, thanks. No further questions for both Collector and Treasurer. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Senator.
Ms. Argo?
Yes.
Is, questions for Ms. Argo? There aren't any, she doesn't even need to walk down. Did you have a question, Councilor in seat one?
No.
Nope. No questions for Auditor.
Nope.
Have a good evening. Assessing. Questions for Assessing? Come on down.
So Assessors is the third department that you've got a revision to. I think I spoke to this briefly when we talked about the fiscal '22 budget presentation. The assessors can certainly speak to it to more extent, but there were $360,000 added to the other purchase service line, and we were hoping initially that we were going to be able to utilize CARES money for this. And we thought we, together with Mr. Gonzalez and Mr. Thomas, or Attorney Thomas, we thought we wrote a great, compelling story that it would be CARES-eligible, but unfortunately, they came back and said it was not. And they will speak to why it's needed in this budget. It is in the FY '22 budget, and that's why you're seeing the huge increase. And then in fiscal '23, you'll see the decrease. So this is something we will be occurring for this coming year.
Mr. Gonzalez, or somebody from the board, or somebody in the Assessors' office, I know we've had our discussions when we do our Tax Factor every year. We have a discussion about the commercial and the residential tax. I just want to make it known that it was this administration and the City Council's role at the last time we certified our tax rate, that we were going to give a break to the residential taxpayer. That obviously sees an increase in the commercial rates. So has there been any discussions? I mean, November's around the corner. I know it's more of a revenue question, but we have the, the Chair of our Assessors' Board here, so can you give some highlight on that, where we're at?
Well, currently, we are finishing up on the building permits. If you recall, the last meeting we met back in November, we asked to extend the new growth to June 30th. And by extending the new growth to June 30th, still means we're out there collecting revenue and measuring building permits. And that was a, a good choice. It's going to, at some point, maximize our new growth, and that'll be probably in August, we'll have numbers on the maximization of going to the June 30th. But at this time, we're, there are quite a few things. This is our busiest time of year in the Assessors' Office. Nell is in the process of starting to do the factor update, interim year adjustments. By state law, we have to have our values looked at every year. So what does that mean? Well, it means that there's a possibility of values going up or down. And in this market, they are going up. So Nell has to do a sales analysis, it's very detailed. She'll be analyzing the residential sales, the condo sales, the two families, the Maltese, and the commercial industrials. That brings us into the process of September. And what I'm going to do, Council President, if I'm able to-
Sure.
-is to go right into where we stand with this request for the $350,000 plus. It was brought to our attention in April, the Board of Assessors, that in the last revale completion, there was a set of instructions given to the city that we needed to have a complete measuring list. And what that means is, we have to go to, or make an attempt to go to each and every home in the, in the city, as well as the commercials. Soon as we thought, or were aware of that, we instructed Nell to set up a Zoom meeting, because it's COVID. We set up a Zoom meeting with the DOR. We wanted to be proactive rather than reactive on this. We've had a great working relationship with the Department of Revenue. We take great pride on our values. This is a very important step. This means that it puts the burden on the office to make sure the values are correct, that the information is correct, because everything's based on information that we go out and achieve or and receive. So when we met, Nell was able to set up the Zoom meeting. It was Nell, myself, and Attorney Thomas, met with two high-ranking individuals at the Department of Revenue. And they definitely mentioned that we had to have it done by this July 5th. We said at the time, because we're aware, because of COVID, we asked them for an extension. They were gracious enough to grant us the extension on the premise that we secure funding, and this is one of the reasons why we're here tonight, to secure that funding. It's a large undertaking that our office isn't set up to do, so we need to get this done. Once this is complete, it's going to allow us another 10 years. This is done every 10 years. So once this cycle is complete, we are then going to have Nell develop a plan to us to have a maintenance plan, where hopefully, we don't come back 10 years from now and ask for another $300,000. We're able to do it in-house. But that means probably hiring additional staff. But I think at this stage, what I wanted to do was to make sure that we have a plan with the DOR, acceptable by the DOR, to go out and complete this task. So that's why I'm here tonight to discuss with the council.
Thank you, Councilor in seat three, Councilor Kilby.
So, Mr. Gonzalez, you're talking about directives, directives from the Department of Revenue?
Correct, correct.
Yeah. And how about a data collector? Is that, when I was in the hearings with Mary Sahadi and, and the mayor, it was like, basically, when I, when I was there, one of the directives said you needed data collector to keep up with the, with the information. So is that Mary in this budget?
Yes, there is a vacant position-
Is that going to be filled?
For, if this council's will is to vote the budget with that position in it, it would be available to be-
It'll be available, okay.
Right. The Assessor Two is in the budget as well as a vacant position, so that would bring the total complement up to seven FTEs.
Very good. Yeah, so for a city this size, as we all know, the Assessors' Office, I think, is like, we're saying about all departments, has been understaffed for many years. And we've done yeoman's work, just when Mr. Gonzalez with the administrative assessing, and now, now, thank goodness, we have him as Chairman of the, of the Board, so he's such a viable resource. So that was going to be one of my questions, but it's been answered, in terms of how COVID impacted your office. I mean, because a lot of, a lot of the work in that office is getting out in the field. And, you know, I'm sure more, of course, the Health Department and maybe a couple of other departments, but the Assessors' Office is where everything starts. It's where the information's collected to send out the tax bills and get everything certified. So, you know, I, I welcome, and I'll definitely support any additional funding that we can have for your, your office, Ms. Repozo, and I appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor in seat one, Councilor Kedney.
Thank you. So I did have originally one question, but just another question, Mr. Gonzalez. So the $300,000 that you're talking about, did I miss? Where, where is that?
Right.
It's, it's in the revised budget sheets that I left for you on the first day of budget deliberations. It's under other purchase services. Right. I increased it to $432,000. It includes the $350 for real estate, and then $10,000 allocated to personal property.
So who's, who's going to be doing the, the work for the $350?
Nell contacted our vendor, RRC.
RRC's going to be doing it?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm sorry, RRC is one, on the personal property. On the real estate, it's Patriot.
Patriot, okay. So I guess my other question was, before seeing this, what was the other increase with other purchase services? Originally, it was going from $56,000 to $72,000, so what was the?
It was RRC. RRC, yeah.
Okay. And so can you just elaborate a little bit, the difference between, so the, the residential data lister? So what is essentially is that? Can you explain that role to me? Just what they're going to be doing, and how's that differ from the assessor? Is it just a clerical?
No, no, the data lister is a, it's a beginning step in the assessing world of outside measuring and listing. So what, basically, what it is, is you have a person who is trained to go out and measure a house. Lister is the inside, and that's basically going in, counting up the number of bedrooms, or bathrooms, et cetera, coming back with that data, and taking that data, giving it to either a member of the clerical or themselves, entering the data, and at some point, it assigns a value. Now, I just want to, I think that's a great concept, and I just don't want to get it confused with us asking for the $350,000. That, that is the step after that. The first step here is to get the city all measured and listed. Once that's done, the lister is a great concept to, to keep continuing that data, that data quality, and also putting a plan in motion, so we don't have to come back to you at some point 10 years from now and say, "Give us $400,000 or $500,000."
Yeah, so I guess my, my question was, and I understood that piece, but I thank you for the clarification, but so at what point does the lister stop performing? So they just do the, the measuring and listing, come back?
Every day, every day.
Put everything, and then when, at what point does the assistant assessor take over?
After that information has been entered, the assistant assessor is now in charge of the value portion of it, and the abatement portion of it, and making, and answering any taxpayers' questions. What we do not want is you don't want the assist, the lister to ask, or I should say, answer taxpayers' questions about value. It's two distinct parts. They work together at the end, but in the beginning, the lister is the beginning phase. It's the first step. You send that person out, that person is a data, is a data collector.
So is this, you had mentioned it's the, I guess what, and you didn't necessarily say it this way, but like, an entry level into the assessing or the initial, the initial phase? So do you foresee this staying as a data lister, or are you looking to get somebody who is new to assessing, get them in there, get them up to speed with list, measuring and lists, and then move them up to an assistant assessor?
It's a good step. It's a good step, because I think in this day and age, there's definitely a problem in finding assistant assessors at the rate of pay. It's very competitive.
Yeah, so I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out is, is this a long-term position or is this a position to get somebody in short term and maybe three to five years, change that, or two to three years, change it to, from a Lister to an Assistant Assessor?
Well, I think that right now, that's unknown. And I mentioned to Nell this afternoon that after we had the revale completed, it would be a great time to think about maintenance. Maintenance is going to be the key. So this position of Data Lister would definitely continue the maintenance of this program. Now, whether or not one person over 10 years can handle it all, I would say no. But it allows, when you have two other, if you have another assistant and you have another assistant, it now allows three people and you can break the city up into thirds. So that kind of works. But a city this size, I think it's, I think it's important that you keep them in a certain section. Because what happens is, you know, you start going from the north end to the south end to the flint. I mean, you see a number of different type of housing stock variety, and it's just confusing. To keep somebody in a certain area, that person knows the area, knows what's going on, and now you have a consistency.
Okay. What I will say is that I'm still upset that you left me to go to Dartmouth.
That's so funny.
That.
I'm done, I'm retired!
I was going to say, that being said, I want to congratulate you on your retirement and, you know, I'm sure you're not going anywhere and you're going to continue to assist us in Fall River, so with that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor in seat two, Councilor Deon.
Hi, good evening. So this, once in 10 years, is going to affect the assessments in this city to what degree? Because obviously, a lot of the properties have been reassessed. I don't know what percentage, single families, two families, multis went up in this last year. Obviously, multis are the golden ticket right now in the city of Fall River.
Let me say this. This is not going to raise the assessments, this process. What this process is going to do is it's going to take our database and make it more acceptable. It's going to fix the errors that we have in the database. It's a security blanket in creating and evaluating our properties. So whether they go up or down, that's a simple answer to that question would be, depends upon the market. Right now, the markets are, they're going to go up, the value's going to go up. Does that mean the taxes are going to go up? They may. It all depends on what you levy. So if you levy more, you spend more, taxes are going to go up. But one thing I can say, when values go up, just to keep it in, rates go down. It's what we levy that decides pretty much what you are going to pay in taxes.
Right, right. So this is, it's more of an accuracy-based program?
You got it, correct.
Because I know there's people out there thinking, oh, my God.
No.
You know, things are going to go through the roof, so that's why I wanted to ask that question for clarification. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor in seat eight, Councilor Pereira.
I'm all set. My question was already answered.
Councilor in seat three, Councilor Kilby.
Very quickly, congratulations, Richard.
Thank you.
But I know you, you're really not retired because you're going to do consultant work all over Bristol County. And as I said before, I think you're such a valuable person to, to the position that you have in this city and the value you bring to the department, I'm sure Nell could attest to that, so.
But, thank you.
In terms of the data collector, I think we need more of them. I mean, it, we need people in the field, we need people updating the information on improvements and different things. That was one of the things that the Department of Revenue really insisted on. I remember when we did our field, it took us two weeks, three weeks, we did our field work. And of course, he asked for a sample of, you know, the cards and the printouts, and some properties haven't been visited in 10 years, eight years, 12 years. And that was one of the things, in order to have accurate values, the Department of Revenue wants to see properties visited. I mean, not every single property every two years, but when you're looking at a property that hasn't been visited in 10, then that's a red flag for them. Because that, what I've realized is that office is all about fairness, fairness to the taxpayer and fairness to what they pay in terms of real estate taxes. So congratulations, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you.
I yield.
Thank you. That will be all.
Council President, even, I should add too, even with the addition of that data entry person, it doesn't mean your Assistant Assessors are not out in the field also. There's that much work. So I just wanted to add that in there.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, guys. Appreciate it.
Oh, one other question?
Council Kilby.
I thought the revales were every five, but it's 10 now? No.
No, 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 no. It's every, we were able, when you say, it's a good thing you bring that up. It's five because the DOR lets you do five.
It used to be three.
It's three. If you don't meet their certification, or they don't like how it was done, they'll make you go back to a three-year cycle. The five-year cycle is basically done by the DOR to say, listen, your data is pretty decent, moving forward, five years. But this measuring list is a requirement under two and a half that you have to, like you said in the beginning, every property needs to be inspected. So that is the integrity of the database. So that's why we were at the 10-year cycle now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Mr. Ferland.
Congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
So Water and Sewer, start page 365 in our budget book, Mr. Ferland's here. Mr. Ferland, or Mrs. Sahadi, as you guys prepare yourself, I'm sure councilors have questions, but in our American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, there is specific verbiage in this rule from the federal government that speaks to investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. So I'd like you to opine for me a little bit on the final rule where it says, with regards to water and sewer infrastructure, projects by aligning eligible costs of fiscal recovery funds with a wide range of types or categories of projects would be eligible to receive financial assistance through the Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA, and the Clean Water State Revolving Fund or Drinking Water Statute Revolving Fund. Can you speak a little bit on if there's any specific capital projects that would be able to be used on this one-time money?
So, yeah, if you'd like, I know during Mrs. Sahadi's presentation, when she did present to most of the council for the acronym that we're calling it is the ARPA-Funding, American Rescue Net, American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, there was a list that I prepared going through our water, sewer, and stormwater needs within the city using our integrated plans. The list, you know, was just about 400 million. You know, that wasn't the money that we received, but that was a list of potential projects that may be able to be eligible for this grant. They took this one-time money. One of the things that they talk about, and you mentioned it, for, to be able to do projects that are eligible through the EPA or the SRF funding, State Revolving Fund, Funding Source, is the majority of the projects that we do. So that's currently where we get most of our low-interest loans and principal forgiveness for the projects that we do is through the SRF program. So every time when we come down here, I know you guys just approved Phase 21 of the Water Main Improvement Projects, that had a portion of it where we applied for SRF funding to be eligible, to be able to be used for that project. All 20 so far of our phases of water main replacement had used and been eligible for SRF funding. Most of our CSO work, I would have to say probably 80 to 85% of our CSO work and other stormwater work that we've done throughout the city has been funded through the SRF program. So when they talk about the SRF eligibility, most of the projects that we're doing do fall within the eligibility requirements.
So there's, obviously, everybody wants to get a piece of that, 30 or 70 million dollars that we're going to see over the next couple of years, right?
Yes.
But obviously, we need to be cognizant of the fact that if rates, if we try to use some of that money to offset rates, we're going to be eventually setting up our structural deficit in future years because there's one-time funds. Is that accurate?
So if we take and we use it to plug into a budget to not increase the rates, so, you know, this year in front of you, you have rate increases. And I don't even know if this is eligible through the ARPA plan, but if it was eligible to be able to plug in to our budget and not increase rates. Currently, the rate increase that we have, so let's just say we were able to plug in money this year, when we got to next year, we would have, if there was a rate increase for next year, plus then also the rate increase that we would need this year, would both be added on, would both come into play next year. So you're compounding the rate increases if you use one-time money like that to be able to plug into your budget. It's just like we always talk about down here when we're using our retained earnings, we're using over 1.9 million in sewer this year and 329,000 within water this year of one-time monies, our retained earnings, to be able to minimize the rate increase to our rate payers. So anytime that we use one-time money within a budget to minimize a rate increase, that rate increase essentially is still there because the budget's still increased, and our budget is strictly based off of our rates.
So that means for people who might not understand what you just said?
Sorry.
It's okay. So to dumb it down a little bit, if we use American recoveries funds to offset rate increases, it will be compounded when that money dries up. So if we use it this fiscal year or next fiscal year, in year three, we are going to see compounded increases on water and sewer rates, correct?
Without a doubt, 100%.
So we've had concerns as a council, we have concerns as a council that we don't want to see increases in cents, in pennies for water, because that's how we feel and that's, we have a right to our opinion. And but there's also, we'll be talking dollars in three years if we use that to supplant, correct? Dollars on the per CCFs and all that stuff.
Yes, without a doubt. You know, the one thing that the American Rescue Act plan, the one-time money, would be able to assist rates would be potentially in future rate increases if we don't have to take on the debt service of projects. So if we were to take that money and use it towards capital improvement projects rather than having to go out and borrow money?
Yeah.
And then pay that money back.
Yeah, so it's like paying cash for a property or getting a mortgage and paying interest rates.
Correct, 100%.
So what analysis has been done by you and the finance team about looking at some of the capital projects, paying them off, which those capital projects do have an increase, do have a portion of the rate increases attached to them as well?
Yeah, so the American Rescue Plan does not have as an eligible cost the payment of debt. So what is eligible is future projects but not past projects. So you can't take a past project and pay off the debt with American Rescue Plan money. You can only use it for infrastructure or the cost of infrastructure going forward. Also, as Mr. Ferland just indicated, if it were eligible, right now, some of the frequently asked questions that have occurred with regard to water and sewer enterprise, well, actually all enterprise funds because they don't really single out water and sewer, but they're indicating that the loss revenue category would not be utilized or would not be able to be utilized for any enterprise fund. So we would not be able to insert some one-time money into these funds from that category. There is some, still some question as to Category 1 in terms of assistance to homeowners, nonprofits, and businesses as to whether that particular category could be utilized, but those answers haven't been provided to any of the communities that have received ARPA money. But again, as Mr. Ferland pointed out, the concern that we have, or I, I guess, as the bean counter, as I've been called recently, as the bean counter, I'm even concerned with putting 1.9 million dollars worth of retained earnings into the sewer budget this year because without that one-time 1.9 million dollars, that sewer rate would increase 86 cents, 80 cents?
80 cents.
So we're talking about a significant increase if this department does not have free cash going forward or retained earnings going forward to insert in this budget. You will be looking at a pretty significant increase in the rate in the 23 budget.
All right, before I acknowledge Councilor Pereira, it kind of speaks a little different in, while I read the American recoveries, right? So it says interim, and I know this is all subject to everybody's own interpretation, but the interim final rule is very clear, that direct investment in infrastructure is limited to projects that improve access to clean drinking water, improve wastewater and stormwater infrastructure systems, and provide access to high-quality broadband service. And then it further reads, with regard to water and sewer infrastructure, projects by the aligning costs would be a wide range of available types for categories that speak to water and sewer. So.
That's correct, Councilor. So that's projects going forward, so we can't pay the current debt we have.
No, I know that. I know we can't pay prior debt, but we have a number of projects that we have coming up.
That's correct. That was the screed that was in the PowerPoint presentation, I believe it was 53 million of projects that Mr. Ferland put forth.
Okay, so I guess the question is, right, if we take 10 million dollars of the 33 million dollars this year and 10 million dollars of the 33 million dollars next year, what does that look like to help infrastructure to relieve the taxpayers on future debt increases without supplanting the increases? What does that look like? Like, have we done any kind of an analysis on that?
Yeah, if you give me one second. So a couple of current projects that we have ongoing, proposed potentially to use some ARPA funding for, we have a large project that's going to be ongoing down at a wastewater treatment plant. It is authorized underneath the 123 million dollar authorization. The total project cost is over 53 million dollars. If we used ARPA funds for about half of that project, the savings on the rate increase would be about 50 cents, 52 cents, if we used ARPA funding for, funding 50% of that project.
52 cents for how long?
For 20 years.
Yeah, for the life of the debt.
For the life of the debt.
So, so I know there's a task force assigned to this COVID money, right? Don't you think that some of that, so, all right, so what is, you say 25 million dollars is 52 cents. What if we talk about 15 million? What does that look like? Would that be 32 cents?
So, point of clarification, so that 50 cents, is that over the total years or is that 50 cents per year?
That is, 50 cents would be added on the rate for 20 years to pay off that debt.
The total, right?
Yeah.
Not 50 cents each year?
Correct, yes. So I don't have one at 50 million dollars, but I do have, I do, I did figure a 10 million dollar estimate comes out to 17 cents impact on the rate. Another project that we have ongoing that could potentially use ARPA funding would be water maintenance building with the impact on the rate of 15 cents.
At what price tag?
The water maintenance building.
Mr. President, if I could, it's roughly, what's the recent phase that we were on? How much was that, 1.5, 1.4 million dollars?
So the Phase 21?
Yeah.
That was a total of 4.9, I believe.
4.9, all right. So just 5 million dollars, and I think the debt schedule he showed us was about eight cents, the impact was about eight cents?
Yeah, correct.
Per year. So over a 15 or 20-year process, I think if you just do a 5 million, you get where you need to get.
Okay, fair enough. Councilor in seat eight, Councilor Pereira.
Yeah, some of the questions that I have is on ways to save some money and other things. You're talking about this money that we can use for better quality of water. There was an article in the Herald News regarding Stafford Pond and how Stafford Pond is getting cleaner, and there was a gentleman with a PhD, I believe he was from the Cape, and how you can treat that water, and they are treating that water so that they don't have the algae. It was called Death Straps, who's working on that.
Yep.
So I looked into it when I saw it, and I guess that the Water Department was aware of this, that Chivoden had called that they wanted Fall River to co-share with them on doing this. It was 200,000 dollars to clean up Stafford Pond, which we own, and Fall River didn't want to co-share with them. They got a grant for 200,000 dollars, and they're cleaning it so that Stafford Pond doesn't get the algae, and it's supposed to last for 20 years. So Stafford Pond runs into Watapa. So if we have that money, why don't we clean up the Watapa so that we? So if we have that money, why don't we clean up the Watapa so that we don't have that algae there? And if you've got the money to do it, and it's about cleaning it up, and I'm about getting people water access, you know that, then I would wonder about that. The other thing is with the sludge, to look into colleges in the area and look at mechanisms that they have now to pull a lot of the liquid out of sludge so that it's lighter to transport, so we get a bigger bang for our buck. The other thing that I wanted to touch base with you about, last night, I forgot what department was here, but we talked about Stafford Road.
Yes.
And all of the cuts that are there. And I know that usually when Stafford Road or any road is going to be done, the utility companies are notified, all different departments in the city are notified. Usually nine months to a year in advance, this is what we have planned for next year. Now they're going to be doing Detroit Street next. But a lot of residents have called. They're concerned that the street was done and then it was cut. Why was it not cut before the binder coat was put down? Is there a reason for that? Is it easier to cut a binder cut than it is an asphalt cut? Is there coordination with whatever company is doing it? I think LAL is doing that, that when they dig it up, how do you know how many rusty pipes are there? Is it only if the person calls or do you know? I know one of them is the restaurant was getting water from the other side of the street, not from Stafford Road. So Stafford Road had to go in and that one was shut off or cut out or whatever. Can you just explain that a little bit so that, who's ever listening at home that lives in the Stafford Road area will understand the rationale?
Yeah, so the water department is out on Stafford Road. We're replacing the lead services that are out there. So the lead services from the main to near the property line next to the curb stop. We had seven lead services on Stafford Road. The determination was brought to us that they were going to be paving Stafford Road at the end of last year once funding came through to be able to put that paving in place. The contract was, the contract was bid out over the winter and then was awarded to do the paving in the spring. Once the contract was awarded, the contractor got to work right away on Stafford Road. That was the first one that he milled and started working on. We work in coordination all the time with the engineering department to go into streets that they're going to be paving to remove the lead services prior to them paving. It just so happened on that street, they went in and they milled. They didn't do a full-depth reconstruction like they do on some streets. Then the cost that they put in was just a leveling cost, a binder cost, which, you know, there's going to be, you know, we're in there now. There was some private contractors because once the engineering department goes out to bid, once they receive their bids in about the project beyond, you know, once they receive and they know that they have the money to move forward, they give notice to all the residents that if they want to upgrade their services, their utilities, to do it prior to the paving occurring. The requirement is to do it prior to the final paving, which is the top cost that's going to go on. We're in coordination with LAL, who is the contractor. They're fully aware of what we're doing out there. And also the engineering department, who is overseeing the contract, is aware of the work that's ongoing out there by us. So this is a necessary step to be able to remove those lead services out of there. We were able to come in, once we had, once, you know, to go in, you know, once they were awarded the contract and we knew the contract was going to move forward, there was notice to proceed. Like I said, LAL moved right into that street and wanted to get going right with that street as well as the side street that goes down, Albert Street that goes down. So we worked with them so that we weren't going to be in there the same time they're milling. So we talked to them. They said, let us mill, put down the, put down the leveling cost and then you can go in and do your cuts, you know, do the lead service replacement. This isn't anything that's out of the ordinary for the paving, street paving contracts that go on, ongoing all the time. We always do this and work with the contractor and work with the engineering department to make sure that we can replace any needed infrastructure that's in there as long as we have the funding and ability to do that.
I think some, although a couple of calls that I got for people that live on Stafford Road was, it said, first of all, the street is not completed. That I know. It's a binder coat. I could tell by the curving because it's only six inches from the curb and I knew it was a lot more. But the question was, well, why didn't they do it even before this went out? I didn't have an answer for that.
Yeah.
Because clearly, if you knew a year ahead, I mean, they're going to cut that out or at least if they're going to go in and rip up the road and now you're just dealing with Dura, I don't know if the next day they're going to go in and asphalt so you don't have time to get your guys in there or what your manpower is like in your department too.
Right.
So.
That's always a tough thing, getting it on our schedule. You know, during the winter, we deal with, we deal with, try to deal with primarily emergency issues so that we live within the street cutting motorium that's in place. That doesn't always happen, but we try to do that. So it was just, you know, by the time that the street was going to be done, you know, and then awarding and everything like that and coordinating with the contract, everybody felt this would be the best time to do it. Again, you know, private contractors, I know there was the one restaurant that you messed, that you mentioned. I know that there is another.
Going down further.
There is another private contractor that, I don't know if he made the cut already, but it was, I know it came through cycle review, further up towards Route 24. That will be doing a cut there prior to, prior to the final paving.
They have a metal plate over that. And I know they were supposed to go to the bridge and then people are calling, why didn't they go all the way to Tiverton because it's really bad on the other side? But the amount of money that we have to do that brought us up to that point, which for a little bit further, why not do it all? I mean, I'll.
Yeah, again.
Fight for that because.
Yeah, the paving isn't within my department or the contract. I know it's.
But it's like you went, you know, it's going to go up to Market Basket, but then we're not going to go beyond that. And then they went up to like, there's just a little bit more to go. And the street there where we can patch it. What do you mean, patch it? I mean, you know, the houses in that area.
Without a doubt.
They pay good taxes, right? I mean, you're talking Dickerson Street, Wood Street, whatever.
Spends.
Yeah, you know, it's, and, you know, it's, all of the departments have to live within their budget.
Right.
You know.
You have a little extra money, maybe just finish that up. Now, none of this money is going to come. I know you've talked about building a new water department building. Where are you at on that?
So we're working with the bidder right now. The bids came in a while ago. And we did have one bidder back out. We were working with the second bidder to try to stay within budget on the project. So we're hoping to award sometime in the near future.
You know, can I ask you that, this question? Has anybody talked to conservation, historic, I mean, that is a really old building. That's one of, I mean, has anybody, and sometimes they build things, knock down things, and then we have the historic commission come forward and say, hey, we're never a part of these conversations on what we can do. Has any study been done on how we can remodel? Because I heard it was about the foundation, but I have a friend that was up there and said, this is a rock-solid foundation. But I don't know because they didn't go inside. I don't know if there's a leak or this or that or something that can be fixed. But I think we have these commissions in the city and we don't seem to utilize them. And then when something's done, they're coming and saying, wait a minute, this is a piece of our heritage. I remember, I don't know, I was going to say two years ago, maybe not, maybe seven years ago. I remember Mr. Sullivan being here. He wanted to redo the water department building way down the bottom where it had the old crane and pump.
The 1873 pump station.
Right, that that's historic landmark.
Yep. So.
All of a sudden, that's not happening. We're getting rid of another old building.
Can we get back to the financial budget questions, please?
Putting somebody new. You know what I mean? So all that money comes from this budget and water bills and to pay for those types of things. So, I mean, I would just caution with how much we can spend on that or getting people involved in that. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Councilor C. Two, Councilor Deon.
Good evening. How are you?
Good, and yourself?
Good, thank you. Did you say that you had comprised somewhat of a list of upcoming projects that you thought would be ARPA-eligible?
There was a spreadsheet that I did do of overall projects throughout the city. And there was a letter that I submitted of upcoming projects that I felt would be eligible, yes.
Have we been given any of that information? And if not, can we get that information?
I can send you a copy of the letter.
I certainly, certainly would advocate for, I mean, we always talk about helping the taxpayers and ARPA money is taxpayer money. It's not, you know, yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of like falling from the sky in a sense, but it's taxpayer money no matter how you look at it. And obviously, it may not affect this year, but if it's going to help and affect rates for future years. And everybody's always saying, well, you have to go up in the rates, you have to go up in the rates. What do you want to do? End up like Flint, Michigan? We've heard that many, many times on this floor. So if we can utilize this funding to improve our water, improve our infrastructure, and help the taxpayer at the same time, I'm absolutely 100% behind that. So I would greatly appreciate it if you could supply us with that information so that as a group, we can determine what we, you know, which projects that we feel that the money should go to and how many of them.
Can we get that to Counselor tomorrow via email and share it with the entire body?
Yep.
And then secondly, you and I have had this discussion and then we traded emails on the $5 resource fee when people are looking.
Yeah, research.
For research. Is that something that will continue? Is that something that we may stop doing? Does that really affect your revenue line? What's, what are your feelings and thoughts on that? Because as you know, I have some people who it's a pet peeve and I fully understand it.
Yeah, so we do have a fee in place. It's a $5 research fee. So if somebody is asking for a summary of their bills of four quarters or more, we do charge them a fee. This fee is typically charged to either a third party that's looking into water usage or a particular homeowner or somebody that is trying to gather past information in relation to be able to submit on their taxes or for other reasons. They're looking for their past information. They didn't, they didn't retain that information. That fee was originally implemented years ago because we were finding that a lot of people were using, weren't tracking their own records and were using us to be able to, to be able to do their taxes at the end of the year. That's, we've seen a, we've seen a great decline of that people using us for that service. So that fee is charged minimally now. But we haven't had any discussions internally. We'd have to go to the Water Board if they decided to recent that fee. You know, it's not a large part of the water budget. I can tell you it's.
Yeah, I can imagine.
It's minimal and the fee is more there, you know, I would have to say as a.
Offer against abuse.
You know, a deterrent. So that's kind of why that's there, so.
Okay, thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor C. Five, Counselor Lee.
Hello, thank you. The ARPA funding, it was explained that we can't use that to bring down, directly bring down rates because of the structural deficit that'll create. Many of the causes, you've described many of the causes for us to have to have rate increases, started with debt service. And the other one was what you called fixed costs, right? So by definition, by your definition of fixed costs, it's something that you really can't bring down. It's something you sort of have to pay. And it sort of eliminates it from the conversation of what we can, what we can decrease in order to bring rates down, correct?
Yes.
All right. So is electricity one of those fixed costs?
Electricity in our yearly budget, I do consider a fixed cost because we need to budget the amount that we feel that we're going to use within that year. You know, rates do go up and down as everything does, as all rates do. Typically not down, but electricity goes up more and more. But yes, I would consider that a fixed rate, a fixed cost within my budget.
And one of the, one of the costs, actually a very big cost, was the fact that we had EPA issues with our sewage incinerator, correct? And then we had to start shipping out our sewage.
In March 2016, we had to shut down our sludge incinerator, which essentially took and burnt our sludge on-site. And then we were just disposing of the ash. Now we have to change of air quality regulations did require us to shut down that incinerator. And yes, now we have to truck out all of our.
So the question that Council President brought up about ARPA funding being utilized, we can't use it for certain areas because it could cause a structural deficit. However, maybe there's some infrastructural expenses that we can, that we can make to bring down some of those fixed costs.
Yeah, so just to touch on that, so Contract Two that we just opened bids on, which is the contract that I mentioned down at the wastewater treatment plant. Contract Two deals with our de-watering throughout the whole, our sludge de-watering throughout the whole entire facility. So it's revamping our gravity thickeners, redoing some of our holding facilities for waste-activated sludge and our recirculated sludge to be able to get that to a point where we would be able to put it into the gravity thickeners to be able to de-water it in the gravity thickeners. As well as within that project, we'll be replacing our belt filter presses, which take a thickened sludge that is about 5%. So right now, we can get our sludge down to about 1.8% to 2.4% in the summer. In the winter, we're more about 3% to 5% thickened sludge. With gravity thickeners, we should be between 5% and 7% thickened liquid sludge. Going through our gravity belt thickeners, we should be able to get down to about 18% thickened sludge.
And that, and that would decrease our transportation of sludge, correct?
That would decrease our hauling cost for the sludge, yes.
So you've explained this before, but I think since we're having this discussion, people are listening.
Yeah, definitely.
You can, can you, can you talk once again about the increase that it costs us once we had to start shipping our sludge?
Yeah, so the increase that cost us, we were spending about $800,000 running our incinerator. And I think there was about $300,000, $400,000 in cost for disposal back then that we were spending. We were just over $1 million. The budget line item that we carry now is just over $2.3 million for.
Very large increase and it's still affecting us today and it's affecting our water rates. I'm sorry, sewer rates.
Sewer rates.
So I guess, so the sludge thickening process that you talked about, I cannot repeat any of that. But, but that process that you were describing, we're using ARPA for that or is that just something that we're investing in ourselves?
So that's something that was included within the $123 million authorization. So currently, that is being funded. We have SRF funding for $28 million of that project, which the SRF funding, so we have a loan from SRF for $28 million of that project. The rest of the project would go out to open market borrowing, but it is our, you know, based on all the information that I've read on the interim final rule, that would be ARPA-eligible.
When will the homeowner see the benefit of that?
Benefit of?
Of this process, taking away this, you know, decreasing this travel of sludge.
So the project is estimated for a three-year construction period.
Okay.
And we just, we just, we just opened bids the other day and evaluating the bidders.
I asked about, I've talked about anaerobic digestion a handful of times for the DPW part. I've also read that there are opportunities to invest in that for wastewater as well. I believe we've talked a little bit about it, but we, I don't know if you've fell into not favoring this.
So for the site where our wastewater treatment facility is, no, I'm not in favor of it. We have a very tight site for the size facility that we're running. In the future, we do have some areas across Bay Street which would be slated for future nitrogen removal if EPA ever does mandate that on us. So most of our existing area either in. Uh, so most of our existing area either in, inside of our fence or that we own around is already slated for, um, for.
Now, is there any, is there any infrastructural, uh, investments that we can make to, with this funding that we're talking about, to kind of assist in that process, or is it an expense you don't want to make because there's too much uncertainty with EPA?
Um, talking about the nitrogen removal?
Just sort of, yeah.
Yeah, so the nitrogen removal currently, uh, that would be if they were to issue a new NIPD's permit. Uh, currently, our facility is a pure ox facility, so we use oxygen, uh, within our bioreactors to stimulate the bacteria growth. Um, nitrogen removal, uh, we've had, uh, a couple of specialists come in, nationwide specialists come in to study our plant to see if there is any, uh, low-cost alternatives, um, to do to our plant to reduce our nitrogen, and it currently isn't, isn't.
No, um, your electric, your electric, um, costs for the proposed budget is just over 1.5 million. Am I correct on that?
Uh, this is in sewer, correct?
Sewer, yes, correct.
Yep.
So, again, asking about infrastructure, um, investments, uh, I've done some, you know, I'm not an expert, and I never try to act like I am, you know? However, I've done some reading about, um, hydropower, um, wind turbines, in-pipe wind turbines, not wind turbines, I'm sorry, in-pipe water turbines, um, to bring down electric costs, uh, and also to have a production of electric as well. Um, again, we're looking at what we can do to spend infrastructure-wise. Has the, is that even, I know that, fortunately, Counselor Dion asked about a list of what you have, but, um, is there any kind of conversation about anything like that at all?
So, and I know we've looked at the possibility of a wind, this was, uh, 10 or 15 years ago, there, we looked at the possibility of a wind turbine down at our facility, uh, and then the city passed a moratorium on, uh, construction of wind turbines in certain areas.
Well, my, that was my mistake to say wind, but I meant to say in-pipe.
Yeah, in-pipe turbines is, is a newer developing technology, um, over the past couple of years that more places have been looking at. Um, we, you know, our plant, uh, we don't have a great amount of, uh, you know, gravity flow within our plant. Um, I'm not sure, I know years ago, there was a study that I heard about, I never read the study, but of a, doing a micro-gitted turbine, uh, within, um, within it, and it wasn't feasible just because we didn't have the elevation difference.
Okay.
With the newer technologies that are coming out with that, maybe in the future, uh, might be a possibility. I haven't seen or heard of anything in a wastewater application yet. Um, you know, I know within, uh, distribution system, we have a lot more, but we have a lot more stuff within our distributions that flows through those pipes, so I, I don't.
I know, I know we are careful about skipping in between water and sewer, but.
No, we have them here for both, so it's good.
So, I mean.
Yeah, I was talking sewer distribution. There's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff within the sewer distribution, uh, system that, uh, would, could get caught up or, or file something like that, so, uh, I don't think distribution system would be the spot, the only spot would really be after we come out of our secondary clarifiers and going, uh, going down to our disinfection chambers. Um, you know, and again, the technology's always changing on that. Uh, I've just read an article recently, um, it was a little while ago, where they're experimenting right now, uh, with putting turbines, low-resistance turbines within water distribution mains, um, right upstream from the pumps.
And they, there's one in Oregon, that's one of the ones I read, and, uh, again, and I have people, you know, they send me all kinds of stuff, but I, I, um, I think it's worth the time at least to look to see what we can do, because if we're looking at fixed costs being close to $2 million on electricity, if we, if we're able to bring some of that down, if we're able to bring down some of this, that sludge cost for, for travel, now we're talking, now we're hitting into things with our infrastructural, you know, investments that can long-term affect and bring down the fixed costs. I, again, you're the, you're the decision-maker, you're the expert, but it just sounds like this is, there's opportunities here.
Yeah, without a doubt, and there's, and there's always discussion, you know, electric is a, is, is a substantial cost for us.
Yes.
Um, you know, it's, we are, um, between water and wastewater, we're the largest electrical user in the city, um, past the municipal, all the, all the municipal buildings added together. Um, you know, we do receive a credit, um, through solar panels that we do have at our, at our water treatment plant.
Do, um, I'm so sorry, the EPA from, I think it was Mr. Perry told us that the EPA sometimes, uh, gives us points for any kind of environmental, uh, you know, environmental-friendly initiatives that we're taking. Is there anything like that for the, for the water sewer department as well, or no, from EPA?
Um, not in relation to particularly energy or anything like that. Uh, we do have other things, uh, for best management practices for stormwater, uh, underneath our MS4 permit. Um, so in the MS4 permit, there are different, uh, it actually requires us to count, uh, the, uh, and starting next year, we're going to have to total up all of the, um, TSS removal that we're doing, all the BOT removal that we're doing from our system, all of the, uh, different, um, incentives that we're doing. So Middle Street, we have the center median area, when we redid Middle Street, is a, uh, bio-retention area, um, so that helps filter out all nitrogen from stormwater and TSS from stormwater prior to going into the pipe and being discharged out of stormwater outfall. So we're going to have to start, under the new EPA's permit that's issued, we're going to have to start totaling all that up on a yearly basis.
Um, I'm going to give the floor to one of my colleagues, because I know that, you know that I will talk about this.
Talk all night about this stuff.
So I, um, maybe, maybe at a future time, we can discuss this, uh, the hydropower opportunity in, in one of the subcommittees, um, the Health and Environmental Affairs Subcommittee. Um, so with that, I yield, thank you very much.
Thank you. Hearing no further questions for water and sewer at this point? Very good, Mr. Furlan, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I do have one quick question, I'm sorry. The, uh, budget that's before us, uh, does that include the rate increases that have gone to ordinance?
Yes, so the budget that's in front of you for both sewer division and water division, uh, do include the rate increases that are in ordinance.
So what happens if the ordinance committee doesn't approve the rate increases and the city council doesn't approve the rate increases?
So then I would need to cut my budget to, um, to, you know, go through and cut to, uh, to work with the rates.
How, how much would that be? How much would you be cutting?
Um, so the rate increase within the sewer division, uh, so, and, you know, I know we talk about cuts every year when it comes to the rates, um, and it's a tough thing. It, you know, to be able to, to be down here, and there are a lot of people that do watch these hearings, there are a lot of people that do pay attention to what happens here. Um, just to come down and talk about, uh, the, you know, possible not being able to retain employees because of not approving rates, uh, having to do that, I think sometimes puts, um, you know, a bad, bad stigma out there for potential people that we may want to hire or bring into this city.
It's also a morale issue, too, I agree.
Without a doubt, you know, we're having a, a problem right now with, uh, water treatment operators down at our treatment plant, and, you know, sometimes, you know, I've, I've talked to a lot of water treatment operators to see whether anybody's, you know, wants to come. A lot of people are happy where they are, um, but some, some of the feedback that I got from people were, you know, well, every year, you're, you're, you're fighting for your, for your budget, which, we need to fight for our budget, we need to be able to prove what our budget and what our rates support. Um, but again, sometimes when we go into all of the different cuts that have to be made, if the budget isn't supported, um, just sometimes.
Okay, so you, you have to obviously cut your budget if, if the city council's ordinance committee says no to the budget, uh, the rate.
Rate increase, yes, without a doubt.
And you're obviously going to do that in any way, shape, or form to kind of make your point, to do everything possible to avoid having to cut personnel.
Personnel, yes. So if, if you'd like, I can go through, uh, some things that I put together, uh, with personnel being the very last thing on the list.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important to know, I mean.
Yeah.
We have a budget before us right now, right, that has increases to it that the ordinance committee has yet to approve, and so has the city council, so.
Yep, so, uh, on the water, we'll start out with water. The water, the rate increase is 5 cents above the current rate. That brings the rate up to $3.48 per CCF. Uh, that's a total rate increase on the average bill of $2.65 per year, uh, under 22, that's 22 cents per month. That rate increase is equivalent to $157,846.15 within my budget. So that's what that rate increase equals within my budget.
And that's water, correct?
This is water, yes. So things that could potentially be cut, um, with, without having to go to personnel or other things, um, fluoride is one thing, fluoride, we add to the water within Flor River. Uh, it's not a mandated, uh, chemical or additive to the water. Uh, we do add it for the benefit of our residents for their dental health and their other things. There was a, uh, there was an extreme spike in the cost of fluoride. Uh, we've had a, uh, extreme, uh, supply issue over the past, uh, two years. We were, we were able to, uh, suppliers were able to get a, uh, supply, uh, supplier that'll finally be able to supply it, um.
And what does that cost if it's removed?
Uh, so that would be, uh, $60,000 savings on the budget.
Okay.
Um, but again, that would also require the board of health's approval, uh, to be able to, uh, to remove that from the water.
I'm sure we can, you, go ahead, keep going.
Yep, uh, so the, the next thing, um, we pay, uh, water department pays a fair amount of overhead costs back to the city, the general fund budget, uh, totaling about $1.3 million. Uh, this is all cost that we pay to the city for, uh, support services that the city provides us, um, auditors, treasurers, collectors, law department, administrative services, uh, other things that we don't have the in-house, um, within the water, uh, we don't have budgeted within the water to be able to provide for ourselves. Um, so that $160,000 or so could be cut from there, but then a con of that is, is that, that's $160,000 of revenue that's taken away from the general fund. So that's a cut in the general fund budget. Um, the next thing, without having to go to employees, uh, would be a reduction of the water capital. Uh, we currently have $200,000 budgeted within water capital. Uh, that includes the replacement of one of our service, of our service trucks. Uh, our service truck is a, uh, is, I'm sure a lot of you have seen it, it's the large truck out there with the enclosed back that houses all of our, uh, all of our tools and equipment when we respond to a water main break or a water service break.
Mr. Furlan, uh, not to interject, but.
Yep.
If you could just maybe just outline what the costs are, you know, I, I think a lot of us might know.
Yep.
What a lot of this is, so it just, if you, just for time purposes.
Okay, yep. Nope, not a problem, sorry. Uh, so reduction of capital could be another one, uh, and then after that would be, uh, staff, uh, would be a cut of staff of a total of six staff members.
Okay, what does sewer look like?
Sewer is a 7 cent increase on the sewer rate and a $1 increase on the stormwater fee, uh, total of, uh, $7.71 per year on average and 64 cents per month. Um, the rate, the rate increase is equivalent to $326,643.40. In sewer, we have a lot less to be able to cut. Uh, reduction of overhead, uh, would be, uh, the first one. Uh, reduction of, uh, sewer capital, but we only have budgeted $80,000, so that would also have to be in combination with something else, uh, or a cut of, a total of 13 staff members.
Okay, thank you. And, Constancy, one?
Um, I thi, I think it's just important to note that, you know, you just asked for the reductions on the rate, but within that, the sewer department has close to $2 million, or just under $2 million for one-time monies, and then the, uh, water department's an additional, like, $324,000 or something along the line, so, um, making all those cuts just reduces the, um, the rate increases, but does not take away the use of one-time monies within that, those two operating budgets, so. With that, I yield.
So, so just to, to your point, Counselor, so people who are home understand, obviously, the use of one-time funds might go away, so it's probably fair to say that down the road, we could see a much higher increase in rates in, in future years.
Right.
So if we're talking about, I guess if we're talking about a 64 cent, or I'm sorry, 64 cents per, per year, whatever we were talking about with sewer, um, or in water, rather, 5, 5 cents and $3.48 per CCF, that's going to be more down the road if you're looking three years down the road, or two years down the road. I get it, I just wanted the council and the community to know where we're at. So, thank you, Mr. Furlan.
Thank you very much, Counselors.
All right, so, we have, um, facilities, come on down, facilities, maintenance.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Furlan. Constancy two, Counselor Dion. Facilities maintenance is on page, starts on page 177, 177. Well, that's where the tab starts, anyway. Constancy two?
Yep, thank you. Um, so on page 182, recovery from grants, capital projects, um, so the $32,169, those monies in recoveries came from which? So.
What page are you on, Counselor?
Page 182. It's, uh, grants slash capital projects. Did any of the, are any of these funds coming from capital projects, and if so, are they being reallocated, or?
So approximately 50% of Tammy's time is spent on specific projects that are capital projects, as opposed to, you know, in-house projects that are in, in city government that are part of the operating budget. And so half of her time is charged to those projects as, um, payroll in those projects, and the other half of her, um, salary is charged to the operating budget.
So, yeah, so that $32,000 then represents, I forgot what page it's on, uh, page 188, yeah, I see it where it says capital project, 32169. So in the total salary, it's split between, uh, the municipal side and the capital projects, or it's what's in the budget plus the capital project?
No, it's split between what's in the budget, so, um, that's why we have the recovery. So her salary, um, as a project manager is $64,337, 32 of it is operating expense and 32 of it is capital project expense.
Okay, I wanted to clarify that. Um, let me see. On page 186, office space upgrades, it's $100,000 in office space upgrades. Uh, what are those upgrades?
So, so again, um, just, um, to remind this council, um, Mr. Grant Gallagher was here, and he prepared this budget, but this office space upgrade would be the type of work that he would be doing, um, throughout city government in terms of building, so, um, for an example, council chambers, when he did work in here, he would charge it to that account, when he did work throughout city hall in terms of, of lowering a lot of the counters for ADA, um, and remodeling certain office space that needed to be remodeled, that would all get charged to this account. Um, police department needs some remodeling, that would get charged to this account, so, um, the $100,000 would have been Mr. Gallagher's estimate of what he would be expecting the fiscal '22 budget to be.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interject, Mrs. Sahadi, we were taught, when, those projects that you indicated are capital projects.
We paid for them.
That have been paid for through capital, through our capital projects, so what do you mean when you say this is something that would have ran through this specific department when it's generally speaking paid for as capital projects?
No, Counselor, a lot of the work that's being done throughout city hall, um, the smaller projects are not capital projects, they're items that are being charged to, um, the facilities, um, department directly.
It was my understanding that we had inactive capital projects, that we had idle funds sitting for capital projects that we were using for a lot of these city hall repairs.
I, I know that there were some that Mr. Gallagher utilized for some purposes, um, there were some used for some parks, but, um, specifically, um, the upgrades that are occurring throughout this building and other buildings, Mr. Gallagher felt there was a need for an additional $100,000 in the FY '22 budget.
Okay.
Do you know what was in the 2021 budget, what was allocated? I don't have the book, I should have looked at that.
I, I don't have that in front of me, but he has been continuously, including some portion of his, um, budget for office space upgrades.
Let's see, we can check that pretty quick.
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't it, are you talking about '21 or '20?
He's just talking about.
No, 2021 versus 2022.
Well, wouldn't it be just right on the, the next column? Like, we have it in our budget book that says FY '21 revised, wouldn't. Wouldn't that, if we, if we had that.
Well, there was a zero there apparently because it's just a dash.
So, you know, again, I, you know, I do apologize, Mr. Gallagher is not here. I don't know if Tammy would be able to answer that question, but these were all projects that he would be anticipating or would have been anticipating expending monies on that were operating in nature and not capital for fiscal twenty-two.
Was there some work done with this?
But yet, it's not. With all the COVID stuff, could that be some of it, of what he's spending?
No. So, so let me, let me interject, right, because I'm starting to, we're, we're drawing some confusion here. So we had CARES Act that was used for some things, like these things that are up in front of all our desks, we used CARES money for that. We, we didn't dig, my understanding is we didn't dig into facilities maintenance to pay for all that. That was all eligible costs. We have some ADA requirement needs that we have in the city, the clerk's office recently, within the last couple of years, you know, we, we did some work there. This is a new, I'll make it clear, right, this is a new line item for office space upgrades at a hundred thousand dollars. I don't want anybody to think that we were using, we had idle money sitting for capital projects that we had, we couldn't, we didn't know what to spend there. We're sitting there idle for years. So Mrs. Sahadi worked with the last council to try to spend down some of that money that we bonded for. So this, just to make everybody clear, this is a brand-new one hundred thousand dollar line item for office space upgrades. A lot of the money that's used for like the work that's been done in here and the work that's done downstairs isn't running through facilities maintenance. It's running through capital projects for government center repairs or inactive projects. I, I bet dollars to dimes on that.
Mr. President, if I may, possible to get receipts of what was spent on council chambers and where the money came from?
Sure.
Please, because with this being brought up, I would really like to know.
So I, I, I am of the belief, and I know our council vice president was working tremendously hard to work with Mr. Gallagher at the time for these, these, the, the repairs that were done in here, but I, I, I'm, I'm really confused and stumbled by the fact that we, you said, Mrs. Sahadi, that the facilities maintenance department was running these repairs prior years. I don't know if that's accurate.
Well, all I can, I can just represent to you what Mr. Gallagher represented to me, that a number of the improvements that were done throughout city hall, he was charging to his operating budget. Without Mr. Gallagher here to be able to identify the specific line items that it would have been charged to, I'm not going to be able to answer that, at least not here this evening. I may be able to do some research and determine specifically where some of those particular line items or particular repairs got charged to.
All right, I respect that, Mrs. Sahadi. Tammy, the work that's being done in this, in government, council chambers right now with this ramp, that's ADA compliance, where are we charging it?
That is a combination of our ADA money in our operational budget and the ADA grant because we have to put in so much money as well, to match.
Okay, you're, you're paying for it out of ADA within facilities maintenance or through capital projects?
Both. Because we have to put in so much from our side in order to get the ADA grant.
Was it a matching grant?
Counselor Dionne, I'm sorry.
Not one hundred percent matching.
That's all right. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
It's not one hundred percent matching. I believe our, our take was fifty, fifty thousand and we could get up to two hundred fifty thousand from the grant.
Okay.
So we still have to, you know, we have to put in something towards, towards it to get the grant money.
Weren't we also putting in signage and different things throughout the building with those, those funds?
Yeah, we're working on that. We, we did the walkthrough of the final drafts yesterday, actually. So that is all in the works.
All right.
We'll, we'll get that under the grant as well.
So you don't know what, specifically what line item in the operational budget, the fifty thousand would have come from?
Yeah, there's an ADA, there's an ADA line item right here, ADA compliance, repairs and maintenance. I believe that is where, that's where I'm taking it from. And I believe that is, that was Mr. Gallagher's intention as well.
And we would find?
Specifically for these projects because this was, these were large projects.
And we would, you know, do you know where we would find that in the book?
I have, page one eighty-three.
Okay.
That's okay. I didn't know if I had the same page numbers.
ADA compliance, R and M, okay. So there's a specific line item to be able to write to the grant, to do the, the handicap.
We've had this line item for several years since I've been in the department and it'll make five years, you know, since we've been facilities. We've had this pretty much right along. This, this year in particular, since we received the project grant, we specifically airmarked that money for the grant, to put towards the grant.
Yeah, well, that line item certainly makes sense. I mean, it, it, I mean, gives you access to a lot more funding that you can accomplish a lot more projects.
Exactly. And then on the years that we don't have, we don't have a grant, you know, at our disposal, we use that for ADA compliance throughout the building.
Okay. Um, so obviously, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know to what extent he may or may not have discussed this with anybody. Um, I mean, was he?
Counselor Dionne, I think the one thing, and, and I'm just going to do this from memory, and I think actually some of it is hearsay, but I believe there was a big discussion about bringing the assessors' office down to the second floor. And Tammy may know something about that. I know Mr. McCoy knows a little bit about it. The, so the assessors' office was going to be brought down to the second floor. The reps and the senator were going to be moved up to where.
The fourth floor.
To the fourth floor where Mike Dionne was. And then the wall was going to be extended where the assessors currently is giving facilities a bigger space. I'm only, I'm only guessing that a lot of this hundred thousand was going to be for that improvements within this building. Because that never happened. It was talked about a year or two ago. It's never happened, but I believe that was one of the projects that Mr. Gallagher was hoping to get completed in the next fiscal year. But I'm just, from talking to people in the assessors' office, obviously Tammy remembering a little bit about, you know, Mr. Gallagher saying it was for the projects within this building, that would make the most amount of sense that he was estimating a cost, because that's a big move to move assessors to the second floor, again, the reps and the senators to the fourth floor, and then making the space for facilities because quite frankly, they're pretty squished right now in, in the area where they are, of opening up that into the assessors' office to some extent. I don't know that factually to be one hundred percent, but that's what I believe he was planning to do, at least in terms of one of the projects within his operating budget. I don't know if there were others.
Right. But she's got that pretty much right on point. And the intention of expanding facilities, besides the fact that we're very cramped, was to bring purchasing up so we would all be together. And, you know, that would just help us with purchasing because the two clerks in facilities are working towards their MCPPO certification. So, you know, between the three clerks together, they could really be an asset.
So we wouldn't consider somewhat, to a certain extent, combining purchasing and facilities maintenance in the same office as a conflict?
Why would that be a conflict?
Just because of the nature of the work, that this, this half of the office is putting in requests and this side of the office is, is accepting and approving the request. As we were talking in terms of, you know, when you, when we, we were speaking, what was it, yesterday, about with, you know, you being the, the project manager, the director and the purchasing agent, that, you know, you're formalizing a request, you're sending it here, and then you're approving the request that you sent to yourself. So just along that same line of reasoning.
Well, just because you have a physical appearance of purchasing and facilities, it's no different than being on separate floors. I understand the whole financial piece and I agree to an extent. And like I said, I don't plan on this being my forever.
You don't want to do three jobs for forever?
I, I love them all, but I do need to, you know, to break it somewhere. So I do agree in that aspect, and we're doing what we have to do to get through right now, you know, till we have something set in stone.
So in the event that this didn't happen this year, partly due, I guess, just from a staffing angle, these monies wouldn't be necessary in this particular budget, correct?
Correct. Because again, I can tell you right now, that's not happening this year with the assessors. And this was part of, I can remember running into him and this becoming a big problem in the assessors' office and on top of what Mr. Goncalves just mentioned to you about the DOR mandate to get that going and adding some folks, that it's just not, you know, I understand the concept would be nice to have the financial offices on the same floor so people don't have to go to the assessors then pay a bill. You essentially get the same thing going on with the, with code enforcement.
Mm-hmm.
And the difference, it's unfortunate that there's just not enough space. But this was going to be a convoluted move that already a year, a year and a half ago was not going over well in the assessors' office. And again, part of that comes from running into Chris, Counselor Dionne, and part of that comes from my friendship with Mr. Goncalves.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we've been friends for some time, so I was hearing about this and it's ironic that this did come up today and, but until Mrs. Sahadi just, you know, obviously you pointing that out and Mrs. Sahadi jogging my memory from, from earlier today, but they, they're, they're spot on. And again, but it's not, it's, it's not going to happen.
So.
Or at least not, certainly not this fiscal year.
Right.
So you're right, that would end up, that was probably in, in, in his, in his stratosphere and his world, but that particular cap, that particular project has not happened.
And even if we were to change it up to any other scenario, those offices still need to be updated, you know, whether we utilize them in another way, shape or form, put somebody in there, they still have to be updated, ADA compliant, et cetera. So we will need money for that.
But some of the funding from the ADA grant would also assist in that, if any of it?
Not the grant, no.
Not even on someone?
No, we would use, moving forward to the next fiscal year, we would utilize anything for ADA out of that fifty thousand dollars. Because the grant is, once it's done, it's done.
Right.
And we, from, and I believe we can only apply for it in two years.
Right. So staying with the hundred thousand dollar line item, if, if the, the money, so the upgrades would come from the hundred thousand dollar line item or you're, not the fifty thousand dollar?
It could be both, depending on what we're doing. Like, certain portions of it could be utilized, you know, from the ADA money and other construction needs from that hundred thousand.
So I know, I.
And that's if it happens, you know.
Right, if.
If there's a plan of action.
There's a big if, you're right.
Right.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is, so, and I know this isn't, in a sense, it's not fair because it's like right now off the top of your head and if you're not comfortable, it's not a big deal. And this isn't holding you, you know, it doesn't have to be a hundred percent accurate either. So let's assume there were going to be upgrades that you feel are necessary. Of the hundred and fifty thousand, how much do you think would really be necessary? Because what I'm thinking of, this last night, we had a conversation about inspectional services and how it's not funded enough and how that, that department can use more money for the, for buildings and et cetera, et cetera. So a portion of this money could be moved to that line item to assist that department and now we're not going and looking for more money, it's already here in the budget, it would just be reallocating a portion of it, is where my mind is going.
That would all depend on the size of the office, the location of the office, what would be needed, you know, if we're expanding, if we're consolidating, because the fourth floor office, when you walk into that office, it's all smaller offices off of it. So that would mean some significant remodeling.
Okay. Well, thank you.
And the prices of materials right now.
Are through the roof.
Out, exactly.
I know, I know, a fourteen dollar, fourteen dollar, two by twelve that used, is now like sixty-two dollars?
Yeah. It's been a thirty to forty percent increase on materials.
Yeah, it's incredible, it's incredible. Okay, well, with that, I yield, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
Okay. Would I be out of order here? I, I keep, a lot of this seems to be speculative, speculation, and I heard the word ironic thrown out. I know that you were just drawn into this and weren't expecting to hold three positions at once. Would it be okay to request that maybe, we have two meetings next week, to sit down and go over this, instead of saying we're going to put a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand of taxpayer's dollars aside because we may need it, it may need, we may need to upgrade an office? Can we have more of dedication for those funds and maybe sit down with Mrs. Sahadi during the week and we can revisit this next week with more of a clarification of where this money's going? Would that be too much to ask?
I mean, I, I don't, I don't think so.
No, I would like, I would like more information as to where this money's going, especially that hundred thousand dollar line item. Because I got about fourteen, we all did, about fourteen different explanations as to why that money was put there. I would like to know really why that money was put there. And now that.
Without Mr. Gallagher.
Mr. Gallagher's not here, but now that you were in the position you're in.
What we can do is, is look at some of the projects throughout the, this building that needs to be done and maybe try to estimate.
Yeah.
What the cost would be.
I would appreciate that, and, and again.
That's the only thing we could do. We don't know.
Yeah.
Exactly. I mean, I, I truly believe it was some, you know, shuffling of various departments around second floor, fourth floor and then, and then their office, but exactly whether there were any other projects in that, I couldn't answer that.
Yeah, and I understand Mr. Gallagher even was, we weren't expecting that. But now that you are sitting before us to represent this budget, I would like a direct answer from you as to where this money might go, not to, and again, not on you, but we're assuming what Mr. Gallagher was thinking when he put this together.
Exactly. None of us know exactly. The scenario that we gave was pretty much all the same.
Yeah.
And that wasn't his, on his radar for the longest time. But sure, we'll sit down and we'll evaluate, you know, what's out there for us to remodel, what our needs may be for this year and pick something and go with it and.
I, I would appreciate that, I would. And if that's okay, Mr. President, I would, I would like to maybe let them have a conversation. We can revisit this next week.
Yeah, sure. I mean, I think that's appropriate, right? But I just have to say, like, I, I, I'm getting, I'm a little frustrated, right? Because, because we advocate and speak about zero-based budgeting in this, in this city. And I feel that some departments are zero-based budgeted and other departments are not. And this is a good example, with all due respect, we're looking at a hundred thousand dollars in office space upgrades, and I know it's only a hundred thousand dollars of two hundred and sixty-three million dollars. But zero-based budgeting means that we've slimmed these departments down to their bare bones to give them the resources that they need. And while I've said, that department heads have come down here and said, the planner says I need more, the building inspector says I need more, but he outlines a plan on why they need more. I just feel like this department is just throwing money and we don't know what we're going to do with it, we just have the money there. I'm frustrated with that. Counselor, you saw it before.
Thank you. Yeah, and I agree, I agree entirely. I just do want to say, you are working three jobs, you inherited this. I just think it would be, to solve this remedy, it would be very important for you to sit down with the administration this week, go over a plan, and then come to us and tell us exactly what we're spending this money on. I know a hundred thousand dollars isn't a lot of money when it comes to the budget, but it's a lot of money to the taxpayer. That's three family incomes within the city of Fall River. So I don't want to make, I'm not going to sit here and say a hundred grand is not a lot of money, because it is, and it's a lot of money just keeping in your pocket just in case. So I would like more clarification. With that, I yield, thank you.
Constancy eight, Counselor Per.
The only question I have, Mrs. McTino, you said that doing the changes in these offices were because of ADA compliance. Did we get something, for example, the assessors' office said, DOR said we need to do ABC. Did you get anything or Mr. Gallagher or anybody that you know that said that we were cited by the American Disability Act, that someone came in and it wasn't handicap accessible? Or, or is it that we are just taking it upon ourselves as a community? Because I remember when we did the bathrooms downstairs, that was because of ADA compliance issues. So I, and I don't know if you have the answer or if you do, Mrs. Sahadi, but was it that something got filed and said you need to make? something got filed and said, "You need to make these offices ADA compliant, hence putting in the money, because we need to follow the law." I mean, anyone coming into this building needs to make sure that their account is et cetera, that are level for anybody with a disability. So, I would just check on that, to see if there's something that came down. You might want to check with Dennis Paselli, he would know.
I don't know of anything that we have received, like, any violations. I know that the ADA laws have, you know, changed, and so we are just trying to bring ourselves up to compliance as a community.
And could it be the Commission on Disability, and Mr. Paselli bringing it to the attention of the city, that these things need to be restructured, that, you know, these things need to be resolved? We had a ramp coming in, now we have a new ramp. Was that ramp the proper slant, or not?
No, it was out of compliance, that's why we had to do it.
It was out of compliance, so did anybody tell us we had to do it, or we just knew?
We knew.
Hey, this is out of compliance, we've got to fix it. So, if we are spending $100,000 on doing things to make sure that we're ADA compliant, then I say we have to spend the money to do it, because we should be ADA compliant. And I'm not sure if we got anything, or maybe, you know, it came from the Commission on Disability, that they said, these are sort of things that the city needs to do.
We're just trying our best as a community to...
Make sure that...
Make sure that we can bring accessibility as much as possible, and as you know, we had the ADA Self-Assessment and Transition Plan...
Right.
Done a few years ago, and that has set us in a direction. You can't afford to do everything at once, but we take a piece of that each year, and work towards better community.
And who paid for that study, to do that?
That was a grant. So, the grant that we receive now is a two-part grant, and there was a project grant, and I forget what the other piece was called, but it was, it was to prepare a self-assessment and transition plan.
Was that the one from the Mass Office on Disability?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So, in order to get...
That was pretty thorough.
Yes, in order to...
That was pretty thorough, and I understand we can't do everything.
In order for us to get this grant, to do the chambers and the hearing room, we had to have that in place.
Right.
And there were many, many, many communities that did not have that in place, and that's why they started offering the grant for communities to do that.
I mean, that was my only question, I mean, are we being proactive? And if we are, I'm delighted with that, because I'd rather be proactive than reactive. And, you know, I think what they're doing downstairs in the hearing room is going to be much better, you know, and if that's the case, but it, I think that Counselor Peckham's right, let's find out exactly, what is this, what are we spending this money on, and then we'll know. You know, so if you can check that out.
Yes.
I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you. Just sort of, we did receive the state grant issued by the Mass Office on Disability for upgrades in this building, this being one of them. Is the council hearing room also part of that as well?
Yes.
Okay, so what was that grant total? Do you remember?
I believe it's $250,000.
$250,000.
And we had to give 50.
And we're supposed to be giving 50, too.
Thank you.
Counselor, seat two, Counselor Deion.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I think Counselor in seat eight, the logic behind that is very accurate, very good. I just question that if it is an ADA compliance, if it's due to ADA compliance, you would think they would put it in the ADA compliance line item, versus just a general office upgrade. I mean, I don't know, I don't know what somebody thinks, but to me, that would have been the logical thing to do, so that, you know, you already have it upfront, that yes, we're using this for ADA compliance purposes. It just seems like if they only needed $50,000, an additional $100,000, when they had the grant for $250,000, I don't know. I think, like, like you said, that gives us more cause and more reason to want something on, in writing and on paper, that specifies what all the dollars being spent on. With that, I yield.
Just a point of information before I acknowledge Counselor in seat one, the Amory is in this budget as well, right? We turn that over to the Redevelopment Authority? Why isn't, why aren't they picking up those expenses for maintaining that building?
To my knowledge, that hasn't been turned over yet.
Okay, Counselor in seat one.
Do you think it's what, the maintenance? Because it was said upfront that the city would still pick up the tab for maintenance.
Is that, is that correct? Okay, I don't remember that.
I believe that was in the agreement, yes.
Okay, all right, I think you're right. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadeem.
There's something I had to address today about that.
Yeah, we have a memo in front of us, yeah. Counselor in seat one.
Thank you. So, the increase in the salaries, that solely due to the electrician? From 707 to 785?
I believe so, Counselor. The additional vacant position of $54,789 as the base, is that what you're referring to?
Yep. So, if I, if I look at that, how do we go from 707 to, are there additional increases? Page 182, and then I'm also looking at page 188. So, if I'm looking at the first line, fiscal year '21 is...
I see what you're looking at. I'll have to get back to you and compare the two bases and the actual individuals, because there has been some change in the staffing in that department.
Okay.
But I will get that for you.
Yeah, because the FTEs seem to only have shifted by one, so there was an increase in, in one FTE, I believe last year was just 14, so...
Certainly, I can do that for you.
And then, I see a vacancy there, and there's no dollar amount or anything, safety officer?
So, that's a, that's a position that has been brought down to this council several times. Mr. Gallagher thinks it's, or thought it was necessary to have a safety officer. The position, I don't believe, was ever approved in ordinance. He continues to believe that with all of the OSHA requirements, that a safety officer would be important, but as you can see, it's not being funded, it's still being carried as, you know, his thoughts, that he would have obviously talked to you about, had he been here this evening.
Okay. And then, the other questions I had, were just with regard to Third Street Parking Garage, and then the Pearl Street Parking Garage, the electricity there, so the electrics increased about $11,000 in each line. Is there a reason for that? Have we added, is there...
Well, they, they've done some new lighting there, and some of the differences, quite frankly, are just better estimates based on, on what is occurring this year, but you can see that there's still some disconnect with the postings of the actual expenses. So, the actual expenses, I'm assuming, I'm assuming, and I'm making an assumption here, are all being charged to the electricity line at the beginning of the facility's expenses, and the same with natural gas. Again, these two garages were just taken over just recently, and so, with the exception of Mr. Ferland, who is very clearly charging the CSO charges to us, the remaining expenses, some of which, like the cameras, I believe are new, Tammy?
Yes.
So, the cameras would be new, that would be a new expense. They finally got installed, as I, as I understand. The maintenance, actually, Mrs. Ferrera can probably speak best to the maintenance, because she has been working with Mr. Gallagher on a regular basis, as to trying to open up the additional parking over here on Third Street, and then certainly some maintenance down on Pearl Street. But again, those details with regard to the maintenance would probably come best when we have traffic in, and Mrs. Ferrera can speak specifically to those items.
So, if I look at the electricity on the first line, so page 183, so the increase of the $15,000, that wasn't including the actuals for the electricity in the two garages, right? So, in other words, we're not double-counting the increase?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
But again, I can certainly check with the staff that analyzes the electric bills, and where the items get charged. I don't believe there would be a duplication, but I will certainly refer to the, as you remember, it's the electric bills minus all the credits...
Yep.
To get the analysis of what gets charged to each department, so it's a little bit of a convoluted exercise, and I'm not sure, now that we have the garages, where those specific meter numbers are being posted.
Okay. All right. With that, I yields.
Thank you. Anything further for facilities? Hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tammy.
We are going to do revenue next, revenue. Revenue would be under the appropriations...
We're not going back to general government?
Well, I'd like to get revenue, because I think that would be a, that's on our agenda here. The general government questions, we would have with, like, the mayor's office, and those kind of departments? Is that what you, is that what you prefer to do?
Yeah, no, I only had one, but it doesn't matter.
Let's get it out of the way, then, let's, let's, so we have mayor, city council, and city clerk, I think, let's get that out of the way, I agree with you. Page 87 begins the general government, we've already done elections and veterans questions. Counselor in seat two, Counselor Deion.
Yeah, the only thing that I have is, especially in light of bringing salaries up to, ordinance up to the salaries, as opposed to the salaries up to the ordinance, in, it's been, the discussion's been in ordinance, so, to me, this is a prime example of a problem. If we look at the FY, let me see, where are we here? Per contract, not to exceed, this particular position is supposed to be $78,780, yet the individual was hired at $83,111.
What page are you on?
So, if you go to page 92...
Yep.
So, can I, just quickly? So, the $78,000, not to exceed, was back in 2017, 7-1-17. So, if you take the analysis that we have provided the council from then, you want to take the 7-1-17, and add the ASME contract adjustment to that, which I believe was 1.5%, that would bring you to 7-1-18, do the same for 7-1-19, 7-1-20, 7-1-21. That's where you should be with this particular position, and I will agree with you, as of this budget, that particular position is still over the ordinance.
So, I'll agree with you, but you want to take that $78,000 and bring it forward to...
All right, so what did, what did you say? What number did you arrive at, if you brought it forward, the $78,000? I'm sorry, because I was trying to find it while you were speaking, and...
No, no, that's all right, I don't know that I brought that with me this evening, no. But...
Again, 7-1-17 with 1.5, to reflect the total adjustments.
Right, so 1.5, 1.5 for three years.
Right.
7-1-18, 19, 20, 21.
Do you have the same thing that I have, that I can let her look at mine?
I'm kind of short.
Sure. Happens to be highlighted yellow. So, yeah, there was a CPI, as a matter of fact, that first year, there was also CPI of 822. If you look at, in the budget book here, let me get myself on the right page.
Oh, that's going to confuse, that's actually going to confuse this matter even more, because...
So, yeah, so the annual salary prior was $84,025. No, wait a minute, I'd have to go back to, I'm going to have to borrow your 2021 book again, because in here, I'm seeing FY '20, okay, 2021, it was $83,111. There was a CPI of 822, and then you have your 1.5% on top of that, correct?
So, that person, this position, based on the contract, the current contract, at least at a minimum, I'm not sure about the prior contracts, but at least based on the current contract, would only get CPI.
Would only get CPI.
So, this past year, the CPI, as I recall, was less than 1.5%.
The CPI in this past year was 623. Well, in the FY '20, I'm sorry, in the FY '22 budget, it's 623.
Right, but these are just estimates, Counselor, because the CPI comes out in January.
Right.
So, there's an assumption that the CPI will be somewhere between 1.5 and 2%, but this past year, and I only know that because my contract has CPI in it, was less than 1.5%. So, I received, as well as this position, less than 1.5, I can't remember what it was, 1.0 something, but it was less than 1.5% for the CPI. I don't know, Counselor Kadeem, do you know what CPI was this past year?
So, is it reasonable to say, then, not to exceed $78,000 shouldn't have jumped to $84,000?
No, not necessarily.
I just don't see a $6,000, necessarily, the $6,000 increase.
Let me, let me, 7. We're going to assume the CPI was 1.5%, just because I don't know what it was, okay?
Okay, yeah, base it on 1.5, sure, that's fine.
So, this year would have been 79,961 times. And this year would have been 81,161 times.
In the FY 2021 budget, the CPI was listed as 822.
I understand that, but...
Okay, yep.
It might have been an estimate, it could have been using 2% at that time, with the hope the CPI would have been higher. So, assuming the CPI was 1.5%, which, we all know that I don't know at the moment, I can go back and get all the CPIs. So, if you look at that, and you assume that it was 1.5%, then the first year will be 79, and then it would go up from 79, it would still be over slightly, but if you bring it to the current salary, it would be $83,614, at 1.5% for each one of those years.
Okay, and it's up to 84,254.
And you are correct, it's at 84,025. So, that is one that we spoke about during ordinance, that theoretically is over.
And in 2021, it was 83,111, which was over, it should have been 82, but the fact of the matter is, it had never been adjusted, so we always end up in that situ, so, not to exceed, but yet we exceed.
Yes, that's why we're trying to bring it. That's why we're down with ordinance, trying to correct some of these.
I know, I know, I just have such a problem with, you know, ordinance is ordinance, but we have to adjust ordinance to bring it up to where a salary shouldn't be. Right? I don't know, I just have a hard time with violating ordinance, and then bringing ordinance to match the number. So anyways, with that, I yield, that was my only thing, just happened to be that line item that jumped out.
And I just, just to, just to clarify this, that is why we're down with ordinance, because there are, besides this position, because I know you're calling out this particular position, because you had seen it in the...
Right.
But there is probably another six or seven, eight, maybe 10 of them...
Yep.
In section 35302, that are in the same situation.
Well, actually, it was because also, just the way, the way our format was going yesterday and today, yesterday was general government, and it was, so here you are, the first thing out of the chute, it's the first salary that goes along with our agenda, so...
And I did prepare that for you, and I apologize with everything else that I was trying to get ready, I didn't bring it down, but I do have that particular analysis, and what's very interesting with that analysis, is if you brought everybody to where they should be, because you know how we're paying a number of people under the ordinance, because when they were hired, they were based on what their skill set was, and their resume was, if we were to bring everybody to what the ordinance would be, so we utilize the concept that if this is the ordinance, ordinance, this is what they should be getting paid, we would be increasing the salaries throughout this budget by approximately $200,000, if my memory serves me right. If we take everybody that's overpaid, it's about $15,000. So, we've got about $15,000 worth of a number of people that are being overpaid ordinance right now, this being one of them, but we also have about $200,000 worth of salaries that are... But we also have about two hundred thousand dollars worth of salaries that are under what is in ordinance for one reason or another.
It's in terms of the up to.
Up to, that's correct.
Right, yeah, because we also have, just, just with the, um, just with the increases in the, um, other personnel costs, um, just for the, what was on our agenda tonight, we have over, we have over eighty-four thousand dollars in increases, some of which, I will be honest with you, I absolutely one-hundred percent disagree with. But that's another story. Um, so that was all I had on that, and with that, I'll yield, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor in C five, Councilor Lee.
I didn't raise my hand.
You didn't. Councilor in seat four, Council Vice President. Your question was answered. Any further questions on general government?
No.
Mayor's office, uh, city council, city clerks. Very good. So let's, uh, let's go to revenue. We still have insurance and other, um, that we still have to get through. We still have assessments, pensions, state and county assessments and revenues, and, uh, reserves rather, and now we're gonna go to revenue. Revenue. Question?
So revenue, um, begins on the tab that says resources by category. On page one fifty-five includes, um, the revenue by category, the first category being state aid. This is the state aid that we know as of today in terms of the increases, or for that matter, in terms of what we are expecting for state aid. As you know, we are still going to wait for it to come out to, out from conference, at which time the governor will sign, um, the budget. And, um, what you have seen in the last number of years is that there is still some adjustments that will be needing, needed to bring it to the cherry sheet at that particular point in time, um, which we will be down with a supplemental appropriation or supplemental revised municipal receipts to mirror what the final cherry sheet will look like. Um, your real estate taxes, you heard Mr. Gonzo, Gonzoles today speak about new growth and the fact that this council moved the new growth calculation date to June thirtieth, as well as, um, a number of TIFs, the two lodges being Millstone Medical and Amazon, which will be adjusted this coming year. And so the new growth is being estimated at three million dollars. Um, at this particular point, um, we are looking to increase the taxes based on the two and a half percent allowable increase. Uh, and I do want to note yet again that the debt service will not be added to the tax bills for fiscal two thousand twenty-two.
Revenue questions? Nobody has questions on revenue? Councilor seat one, Councilor Kadeem.
Thank you, I was just gonna wait for my colleagues. I think in general, just general conversations and then more detailed questions. You know, my, my concern is, is that we've got a structural deficit in, in this, and we've had structural deficits. We have structural deficit in water, we have a structural deficit in sewer. Um, and, you know, the definition of structural deficit is that you've got reoccurring expenses that just increase faster than the revenue that's coming in. What I, what I'm seeing is some one-time money is being plugged into this to help balance the budget. And at some point, as we had just talked about with sewer and water, we reach a fiscal cliff, right? When we have no more money or one-time monies to supplement our revenues. So my concern is, and my concern has always been, um, what are we doing to, um, I guess minimize the structural deficit and try to avoid a, a cliff, a fiscal cliff when all our reserves are depleted and there's a gap between the expenses and the revenues? So that, I guess that would be my, my first question to the administration, because when I, when I begin to look at, you know, the revenue numbers, we see taxes at, um, increasing at two and a half percent if we go to the, to the levy limit. Um, with the new growth, we're at roughly five-point-two percent. Our local receipts, um, are at a negative point seven percent. Our local aid is at three-point-five percent, the schools are at six percent. Uh, but that's not, you know, reducing what we have to kick over for charter schools, things of that nature. Um, and with that increase in, in chapter seventy money comes an additional increase in the local contribution that has to be kicked over, so that, that also plays into it. But then you look at our key expenses, and if you go to page eighty-five, there's, there was actually a very, and I want to recognize the, the budget process through that, because there is a, a very detailed breakdown, which really kind of gives you some key, uh, increases in, um, I guess totals in different categories, whether it's salaries or expenses, so that you can actually look at this. But healthcare for this fiscal year saw a very slight increase, but typically you'll, you can expect anywhere from a three to, you know, when the healthcare costs were really, really high, anywhere up to eight to nine percent. Um, we're lucky enough, because of the COVID situation, to be low. But you look at the pension increase that we have, which is a fixed cost increase, is, is six-point-three percent. We've got compensation at seven-point-three percent. We've got debt service at seven-point-one percent. We've got education at fourteen percent. But then if I go back, and I know I just stated this, but our revenues are at two and a half percent. You know, local receipts are at negative point seven percent. So clearly you can see that our, our expenses are just higher than where our revenue's coming in. And I know a lot of folks have, have been asking this question. How is it that the city is not able to properly support the departments when we've had new additional increases? We've seen home values increase, things of that nature. And then the reason is because our, our expenses are increasing way too much. So now we're constantly talking about what our departments need, right? So we need to, we need to be able to balance that. So I guess my, my first question would be, with all that being said, and with regards to the structural deficit and the fiscal cliff, and I, and I'm not blaming this administration, because I think we've had structural deficits for a very long time, we've just never really been addressing them. What are we doing and what has been done, uh, you know, to address the structural deficits, at least on the expense side, to try to minimize, um, you know, the, the actual increases that we're seeing? I know we can't do much with, in terms of, you know, the pension, um, and, you know, healthcare really is, for the most part, you know, outside of our hands. I mean, we can do some plan design, things of that nature, but it's very, very limited on, on how much you, we can reduce. But when we look at compensation, we talk about trying to, to keep quality individuals in key positions. Um, and rightfully so, you, you would think the cost of living adjustment would be anywhere between, you know, one and a half to two percent. So what is it that we're doing? Is it additional revenue? Um, you know, I'd, I'd open it up to you, like, what's the administration, the administration's plan moving forward? Especially with the use of, you know, four-point, four, uh, four-point-five million dollars in OPERA money. We've got one-point-seven million dollars, uh, coming from the stabilization account, uh, to fund capital items. I'm not sure how much of the S R two money, um, we're using for, for the local contribution, so I would ask that too. But what is it, what is it that we're doing to try to kind of minimize that fiscal cliff? And, and obviously, I, I don't know when the fiscal cliff is gonna hit, but it's gonna happen soon, right? It's gonna happen at, at some point, and I think, um, we need to just start talking about that. And, and just looking at the revenues, you know, I think this year, more than any other year, is really kind of, you know, honing in on the fact that, that our revenues are stagnant. There's, there's not a whole lot there.
Um, so it was a long-winded question, so I'll try to take it in pieces, right? So the, the pension is, is somewhat set in stone in the sense that, um, we have a amortization schedule, and we would expect that amortization schedule to increase the pension costs about six-point-three percent or so annually. We are not, we are not necessarily at the maximum year for the pension. Um, I know the retirement board doesn't have, um, an appetite to go out to the twenty-forty year, but there is that opportunity if, in fact, the administration would, um, want to approach the retirement board for that. Um, the health insurance, we are continuing to look at, um, plan design to make some changes. This past year, we increased, or we introduced a high deductible plan with an HSA, a health savings account. Um, so with that, we're expecting some, I mean, this year, again, with the COVID year, it wasn't as easy to go out and promote necessarily that HSA plan. Um, but certainly with all of the new hires, the, um, HR department is spending a significant amount of time, you know, trying to educate them as to the high deductible plan and the benefits of having an HSA with it. Um, and actually, Council Kadeem, I'll thank you for, you know, helping promote that, because I think the city tried that high deductible plan in the past without an HSA. And so without that HSA, you're not going to get many employees, especially since the city pays seventy-five percent of their health insurance to migrate over to the plan. So I think with the, um, health insurance savings account, it will certainly, or it has, it's, it's already helped move some people over. Um, we also did some design change with the retirees, and we moved them over this year for some additional savings. But you are correct, we're getting to the end of possible changes in health insurance that will keep the costs down. And, and prior years, not necessarily in the last year or two, but there have been prior years where the increases in health insurance have been quite significant. Um, we're very fortunate this coming year, um, with all of the savings that we just talked about, the introduction of the new plan, um, and the fact that our employer, um, health insurance account right now is significantly higher than it's ever been, um, that the, um, recommendation from Diane LaFlash was not to increase the employee withholding. So their withholding will not be increasing, um, this year. And you can see from the insurance budget, it's actually decreasing slightly over the prior year. Um, the stabilization account that we included in the budget last year for the two million dollars, we are very fortunate that we were not, we did not need that two million dollars to balance out this, or will not need that two million dollars to balance out this year. However, we are, um, attempting or asking this council to utilize one-point-six-seven-seven million to cover the capital costs. So there are a number of capital costs in this budget that we could have potentially come to, um, this council for debt service on, but because we didn't need the two million dollars in the prior year, and that, that our stabilization account is at a balance of nine million dollars, we thought it was prudent to utilize, um, the one-point-six million dollars out of the stabilization fund. Especially at the time when this budget was developed, we, and, and honestly, to some extent, still don't know how much of the American Rescue Plan Act revenue loss or other categories of that plan can be utilized in, um, the operating budgets. So jumping to that particular line item, that, you know, to some extent, that was the, that was the intent of the federal government with Congress when they provided us with sixty-nine million dollars. Some of those monies were to make municipalities whole, um, with regard to those revenue losses that occurred. And those monies will be able to be utilized going forward, um, at least through the time period or the eligibility period for the OPERA money. The other local receipts, um, you, you are correct. I mean, I'm not going to sit here and say you're not. You've heard Mr. Perry here, um, multiple times with regard to, um, trash fees. You know, we're, uh, you know, we don't have a mechanism for additional local receipts. You can see even in this budget, you can see a slight decrease over last year's budget for local receipts. Now, some of that was interest income, um, because what we did, if you remember correctly, is we initially borrowed sixty million dollars on the high school, and then we borrowed another thirty million dollars for the high school. We were able to invest that the best we could, so our interest income was significantly higher. But as we continue to pay Suffolk and we're getting close to the end of, um, the high school project, those dollars will not be available to us. The, as I indicated earlier this evening, the thirty-four million dollars that we were just awarded with regard to the OPERA money, we will see some increases in, um, investment income in twenty-two, um, and twenty-three, because as you know, we've now invested it, we're not going to spend it immediately, so we will have some investment income. Um, the mayor, as you all know, has put together a panel. Um, the panel included, includes Mr. Furlan, who was here, uh, Mr. McCoy, includes myself, Councilor Peckham, and a number of individuals from the business, from the business community who, oh, and Mr. Dion as well, who are providing input as to where they believe, um, this American Rescue money should be spent. But to some extent, you know, it's clear from all of the literature and the monies from the government that the intention was to make the municipalities whole. And so, um, four-point-five million dollars is, is slightly less, or it's actually been adjusted a little bit with those revised numbers that we've just recently provided you with. But the, the dollar value in the fiscal twenty-two budget is slightly less than the calculation. In addition, there are other mechanisms to include monies within the budget that are OPERA eligible. So one of them, and I think I spoke about this briefly one of these nights, and I apologize, the nights run together. But if your staffing has increased or had it decreased as a result of the pandemic, which it did, because we reduced all those, those positions in the twenty-one budget, then you're allowed to increase or utilize those dollars in this budget as well for, um, both their salaries, that number, so I think we're at twenty-seven or twenty-eight increased staffing from January twenty-seventh, which is the date they're using in the guidance, plus their benefits. So there is that opportunity to utilize those monies in, um, the operating budget as well. Again, at this particular point, when this budget was put together, um, the task force or the panel, panel was not put together, and the administration had not made any commitments to any particular category as to where, um, the best use of the OPERA money would be. And so, um, getting back to, to your point, yes, there are some, clearly some one-time money. There also is, and, and it's just as a reminder, but the taxpayers in this, um, community voted the debt exclusion on the high school. And although it's not being utilized in this budget, it certainly could be, and it certainly will be in the future. So you do have, um, and I hate to use it as a source of revenue, but you do have the payment of that debt service that really is going to be the responsibility of the taxpayers. Um, they, they voted the debt exclusion, um, the school is being built. We clearly have the debt service as it relates to the school that needs to be paid. And again, right now, it's being paid through the operating budget, but ultimately, um, it will need to be paid by the taxpayers on their tax bills. So those are some of the things that are, have been talked about, but we can go back to local receipts. Um, again, it's decreasing a hundred and forty-nine thousand, but I'm in complete agreement with you. We've got a number of departments where the fees could be higher, and we've talked to two in the last two nights. Mr. Perry will be here, he'll talk about trash again. We've all talked about trash, um, at so many meetings, I can't even count them anymore. It's, those kinds of areas are an issue. Um, we are continuing to work with, um, again, Blue Cross, with our health insurance. Um, we have talked, um, slightly, and I, again, this, this would be Mr. Perry's department, but, you know, we're working with our vendors to decrease the cost of disposal for recycling, so we were able to reduce that, um, tonnage cost significantly. But everything, as Mr. Perry. significantly. But everything, as Mr. Furlan indicated, everything goes up. So electricity goes up, the salaries go up. You know, I would say we've been fortunate as, as a city from the point of view that we have been able to negotiate contracts with very marginal and nominal increases. I mean, if you look at other communities throughout, you know, even the South Coast, the increases in a number of those union contracts are more than the one and a half, or really the cost of living that has occurred here. And, you know, I know we've talked with the ordinance committee, and it comes up on a regular basis. It's in the budget, sprinkled in the budget everywhere in the sense of increasing total personnel costs. But the staff here are underpaid. And in order to get them to a salary that is necessary, even if we just brought what ordinance is right now, that's another 206,000. If we bring those, or some of those other individuals up to where they've asked to be brought up to, excluding even negotiations with the union, we're talking about comparisons to other communities. And I can tell you, if you use New Bedford as, as a point of reference, every single position here is underpaid compared to New Bedford salaries. So I don't know specifically about Brockton and Totten, but I could probably imagine that if you make those comparisons, you're going to find they are significantly lower. And then if you utilize, you know, some of the departments that were here just this evening, the staffing is lower. And so we're looking at, you know, and I understand that because it's a burden. And we've got, we've got departments here that generally have bare-bones staff. And I know we didn't talk about my budget tonight, but it's the same thing. New Bedford has three people in the CFO department. I have me. So, you know, it's, it is, it's across the board. It doesn't really matter what department we're talking about. You can take any department here and make a comparison, you know. Mr. Hathaway needs extra people. You know, Allen needs extra people. Attorney Rumsley needs extra people. You heard Mr. Kenny tonight. So, you know, where are we going? It's really, you know, we have a city administrator now. You know, I will certainly work with the administration and, you know, give my ideas. But at the end of the day, it's really the administration, the mayor, that needs to make the decisions as to whether or not we're increasing fees or, and then, of course, all of you, because most of those fees need to come to ordinance. But that's, you know, you want to talk about the cliff, I don't know when it's going to happen. I can tell you, using the OPERA money and then bringing in the debt service, we should be okay. I mean, that's kind of a sad way to put it, but we should be okay. So, you know, we have continued to increase the stabilization fund. And, you know, when I came in, it was at 500,000 or 300,000. It was at a very low amount. We're up a little over $9 million. We will have some money certified this year. It won't be like it has been because we're utilizing the turnbacks, as we talked about, for payment of the retro. So, and, and we still have some shortfalls in revenue this year. I mean, we're still down based on the pandemic, you know. Parking meters is still down. I mean, there are a lot of people that are just going back to work. My good friend works for the DA's office. They are finally going back on Monday. They have not been to work. I mean, they've been working remotely, but they have not been in that building since March of, a year ago. And that's a long time to be working from home.
No, and I appreciate that. I just think that, you know, when we start to look at the amount of one-time monies that are coming in here, and I would agree with you, and I anticipated that, you know, the 4.5 for the OPERA money was going to be offset by, you know, the debt exclusion. But again, you know, the debt exclusion is essentially a prop two and a half override, right? So, you know, the voters voted for it. I don't know that, you know, I would make an argument that based on the direction we're going, it would require us to actually do a prop two and a half override to, to be able to get the revenues that we need if it's going to come through taxation. And I know there's absolutely going to be no appetite for the council from that. There's going to be no appetite from, you know, from the voters to do that. My concern is, is that, again, as I had mentioned, that just, you know, even if we plug in the, the, you know, the debt exclusion monies to, to offset the, the debt payments, we're just not, we're just not meeting the percentage increases for, for the expenses. That, that's my concern. And I think, while I agree with you that, you know, and I've said it before, we're not paying individuals the salaries that they deserve to pay. But I'm also seeing, you know, Mr. Kenny was a, is a prime example. You know, he comes down, he's, he's coming down before us saying that he needs, he needs, he needs. But then he tells us he doesn't have enough time to do a quick search. And it's, trust me when I tell you, it's not a whole lot of time. I wouldn't, I wouldn't disagree with him if he came back and told me that it's probably a lot of time and effort to rework the regulations for, you know, site plan review and conservation and stuff like that. But to do a, you know, a fee schedule is, is not a whole lot of time. I mean, that's, that's an email to other communities saying, hey, what, can you give us your fee schedule? I mean, that's, that's a document that comes in. You're going to get, you know, 10, 15 responses, 20 or 15 Excel spreadsheets, and you're going to look at it, and you're going to say, okay, we need to adjust here, adjust there. And I think some of our department heads, not all of them, but some of our department heads only know Fall River, right? And I, I think we're not doing a good enough job to, to ask the question, what are other communities doing? Because we don't need to reinvent the wheel. You know, go back to the police department. You know, we, we get an audit from Ed Davis. I mean, quite frankly, I'm glad they did it, but talk about a waste of money. You know, I mean, we get something, tells us everything we knew, no recommendations, right? Zero recommendations on what we're going to do. We already knew comp time was being abused. So what's the recommendation? Right? So there's, there's no changes to, to adjust what we're doing. Like, it just, this is what's concerning me, you know. And I agree with you. I, I think it's the administration. We need an administration that's, that's going to be forward-thinking. It's not, it, it's not an easy fix, and I'm not claiming to, for it to be an easy fix. And that's why I, I prefaced my comments by saying that we've had a structural deficit for a long time. My concern is, you know, 4.5 million in OPERA, 1.7 million coming from capital funds from the stabilization. We've done a phenomenal job over the last couple of years building that up. But we've also talked about the fact that the more lean we get with these budgets, the less opportunity we have to really kind of generate these surpluses and, and build up these revenue accounts, the stabilization accounts.
I don't mean to interrupt you there, but that's exactly right. Because if you remember, there was one year that we were very lean. And I think free cash was certified at $700,000, and everybody was surprised. But when you really think about a lean budget and zero base and keeping revenues or estimating revenues where you truly believe they are and you're not underestimating them, you should not have free cash.
Right.
So the whole idea is the free cash is really a built-in surplus of unknowns when you're preparing the budget.
And so, you know, and then we go into the water and sewer, the $2 million in retained earnings with really no rainy day fund for, for them, 300,000 in the water department. Again, it's just, that, that's, that's where my concern comes from. And the question I had with SO2 money, how much of the SO2 money are we going to be utilizing for the minimum contribution?
So when, if we utilize the governor's budget, which we know is not the budget any longer, it would have been 1.3 million. I utilized what the Senate Ways and Means was at, utilizing about that 20% MOP that's going to be us. So this budget includes 1.6 million.
1.6. So that, so again, that, that to me is, is another 1.6 million of essentially one-time money because we're not going to have the SO2. You know, so I'm not going to belabor the point, but I'm concerned about the budget and the use of all this money. And I, and I agree with you. And the, you know, the spreadsheet that you gave us, I mean, we've got, I think it was 60, 60.5 FTEs, you know, totaling 3.1 million. And that was just really trying to get us back to, you know, the FY20 numbers. And I, I think we need to take a hard look as, at to, as to what do we truly need, right? You know, I just made a recommendation, 90,000. You know, I've got the planner coming before us, telling us that he needs all this work, is not looking at revenues. And you talk about an engineer. And folks want to say, let's keep an engineer. I gotta, I gotta be honest with you. I come from a community that doesn't have an engineer, and we've got just as many, you know, plans and conservation. And we've got, you know, we don't have sewer, so we've got septic issues. We've got conservation issues. I mean, it, it runs the gamut. It works. It makes sense, right? So when we can only have a limited amount of resources, we need to look at what makes the most sense. And to me, you know, recommendations like this should be coming from a department head in the administration down to the city council saying, listen, we need to, we understand that the system's broke. This is how we're going to fix it, right? We need a conservation agent, but we don't necessarily need an engineer because we can charge the end user who's coming in for these site plan reviews to pay for a firm who understands right off the bat, zero training, understands Wetland Protection Acts, understands our, you know, our zoning ordinances, can make recommendations, is going to be looking out for, for the, for the city. And before any of these plans are, are approved, they have to meet all of the requirements and recommendations that are coming from these engineers. So, you know, that's 90,000, right? That's, that's 90,000 that gets shifted over to, for a conservation agent so that the planner has somebody who is strong with, you know, wetland protections and, you know, things of that nature, just, just to make sure that we're, you know, we're, we're holding developers accountable. I, you know, I could go on. But I just think in, in several years, like, what, what are we doing in two years when we don't have, you know, the 1.6, the 1.7, and our revenues are still stagnant? That's, that's my concern. You know, we've seen, we've seen it with the pension, where we just kicked that, that can down the road. And I say, we, not, not any of us here, but, you know, the city has kicked that can down the road.
The state even, really.
Right. And OPEB, OPEB's the same, same situation that's going on.
OPEB will be a requirement at some point, I believe.
And probably it's going to be pretty, it's going, if I had to guess, it'd probably be after that, you know, the whole pension system is taken care of.
I'm going to say, I'll agree with you, counselor. It'll be after 2040.
But that, I mean, that's just another big, that's even, that's bigger than the pension, right? So that's going to be a, a more difficult challenge that we're going to have to deal with. So in terms of, so the motor vehicle excise tax, the, so local receipts, so your motor vehicle excise tax, 8.1 million, that's, so you're not carrying any increase. The actuals that you had, is that close? Are we close to the 8.1?
Yeah, it's close. The, you know, obviously, the collector was here this evening, and he and I spoke about it again today. The last, and I don't know if you experienced this with CCONC as well, but the commitment, this last commitment was very late. And so the payments aren't due till the 24th or the 26th. And even at that point, there should be two more small commitments after that. So he believes that we're going to, we're going to hit the 8.1. But again, I left that flat because, you know, I don't know what the future's going to be. And when we first looked at this back in March, when we were developing it, that commitment wasn't ready. And when we looked at the actuals, we were low.
Right. Okay. The, the other thing I had a question on was the cannabis impact fee. So I've seen you, you increased that by 300,000. But when I was looking at the, the sales, it only increased by 100,000? Is that?
Yes. So the 100,000, and, and actually, Mr. McCoy asked me the same question. So the 100,000, the other excise, that's just recreational.
Okay.
And
And so the impact fees.
Right, would be medical as well. And you, if you remember, and I know that some of this stuff, I don't expect everyone to remember, but the second largest facility here in Fall River opened two weeks before the pandemic and then was closed down. So there's an expectation that that revenue will increase in the next fiscal year because they're both now open and running.
Yep. So if I, if I turn to page 59, so your medical marijuana sales, I was just looking at the actuals through 331. So it was only 498. But I'm, I'm assuming, you know, we probably missed some of the payments coming in.
We did. Yeah, we did. So again, the state was, well, first of all, some, I believe some of the vendors might have been closed, although they do use MassConnect. So they should be paying timely.
Right.
But we are definitely one quarter behind all the time. And again, this is just, don't forget, we're back to the pandemic here. This is going to be, we're going to be short this year for sure.
Well, and that's why I was going to ask, because when I was looking at last year's reports and just seeing where they were, just assuming the timings were, the timing was the same, at that point, we were, we had $768,000 versus the 498,000 that we have here. So do we, do, I guess, do you honestly, and I know it's only 100,000, but do you honestly think, based on whatever the shortage is, do you, do you really feel like we'll get to that 1.6 million?
Well, based on the estimates that I, we're able to work out on a monthly basis, because I look at this monthly, and I look at the, what, what the average is, of course, throwing out all those months that were in the pandemic. And I'm looking at what I'm collecting from each of the vendors. Because I, and I mean, you, quite frankly, I'm only using the two vendors right now, although we have a third one. The two vendors are what I'm using for the estimates. I believe we can, you know, assuming that other communities, meaning Somerset and Swansea and other communities that are now opening up, are not going to draw a significant amount of the customers that are coming to the Fall River facilities, then we should make these numbers.
Okay.
But, you know, time will only tell. I mean, Somerset's now opened.
Right.
And so there may be, you know, people may prefer to go to Somerset. It might be easier. I, you know, I don't know.
Okay. And then my final question is regards to the payment in lieu of taxes. So the town of Dartmouth, so why did we remove the town Dartmouth? Weren't they paying for the water rights?
Yeah, they were.
I feel it.
That might have been an oversight.
Okay. Can we just take a look at that? I know it says it wasn't in the '21 budget, but, I mean, I know they have to pay for those ponds because we own the, we own the ponds, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. I'd have to look.
Okay. With that, I yield. Any further questions?
I'll make a comment, though.
Counselor on seat eight, Councilor Pereira.
You know, I mean, it's great to hear that we have so much money in stabilization, but you have this money in the stabilization account, but a lot of our departments are inadequately staffed. You know, my colleague makes a point about the city engineer and that, talking about what CCONC does and all that CCONC has, they don't have the sewer system, they've got septic. But you've got to look at the demographics of a community. You've got to look at, you know, what's the median income, one place versus another. I, I think that we have a difficult time comparing the city of Fall River to a town like, like CCONC, where the average median household, the income of the salary is $56,000. We have a problem here because unlike a community like that that has a lot of businesses, which CCONC does, you know, they have a lot of money that's coming in from businesses. And over here, the disparity that I find in Fall River is with the houses, with people coming in, paying big dollars, buying houses. And then where do we push people out? It seems that people have been pushed out of Boston, Brockton, Quincy, you know, and, and they come to Fall River because our rents were less. But now, where do they go from here? And, you know, payment in lieu of taxes, we have tried to get so many of the nonprofits in the city to give us a little bit of money. I mean, how often, some of these nonprofits, not all, but some of them, how often do police respond? Do fire trucks respond? And who pays for that? The taxpayers. And, and I really think that perhaps administration needs to have a conversation with a lot of these nonprofits and see, how much can you contribute to the community? Because the nonprofits are making profits. And how much can you contribute? You know, we had businesses that if the fire alarm went off more than two times or three times, then we were going to charge the businesses to go there. We got nonprofits. So we're going to charge them, we're going to say, okay, you're allotted so many police calls or fire calls? No. You got to send police and fire when you have to send them. But it just seems kind of unfair. What would the, the debt service be on the new high school? What's that amount that people would pay yearly?
Well, I'd have to do, I'd have to apply the rates.
Yeah.
And I can't do that off the top here because I'm not even sure what the shift is. But the total, the total tax, I mean, the total amount, the next fiscal year is 4,489, oh, 89. And we have about, I would say about $9 million more to borrow to complete the project.
I know it was voted on, etc. You know, are we going to try to not kick that off this year? Is that something that we can?
We are not including it on the tax bills this year.
This year. But then, the following year, we will. But, you know, this city is very unique because we're in a situation where But, you know, this city is very unique because we're in a situation where we're trying to represent all the people. And there's some people that will tell me, look, put a trash thing on. I want to get rid of my trash, and I want to make sure that we have others. Other people don't want to have anything to do with that. Do you know what I'm saying? Some people, yes, we need to increase fees. Other people, we can't afford to increase fees. So, you know, there's two separate groups in the city financially, two groups financially. You know, I mean, I feel bad for people on fixed incomes, people that are retired, people that are widows, trying to keep their house with taxes going up, insurance going up, not out of our control, but insurances going up, et cetera. I mean, I know several people that remortgaged homes, elderly people, that remortgaged homes to try to keep their home because it would be easier to just, you know, pay a smaller mortgage or what have you at a lower interest rate and to give them some cash on hand to, you know, do remodeling or things that they needed to do. It's just, I don't have, I don't think that there's a simple answer...
There is no.
...to what we have. But if we can't put as much in stabilization, although I like to, because then we can borrow money better.
But you have to keep in mind, too, that we need to borrow. And when we need to borrow, our rate depends on what we have in our stabilization fund and, you know, both, I mean, we're still utilizing the state's bonding rate because our rate is still not sufficient enough to borrow on our own.
We're just in a tough situation. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor in seat four, Consul Vice President.
I just have one question. As far as the 4.5 in Opera monies for lost revenue, which areas of revenue were you expecting to be short that that money is filling?
Well, the way the formula works is the base year is 2019. So you take the 2019, and the formula allows you for a 4.1% inflationary rate. So you take that particular dollar value and you multiply it by the 4.1%, and then you further multiply that by the number of months as the numerator divided by 12. So in our case, that would be 18 divided by 12 or another 1.5. That would bring you to a number. You take that number and subtract your actual receipts, and the difference, the calculated difference is about 5.5 million.
5.5 or 4.5?
It's about 5.5. We're only utilizing, and actually, with the revised pages of the few items that I gave you over the last couple of days, so the 300,000 in assessors, the reduction in lore, the actual amount, I believe, that we're carrying right now is 4.6 million or so.
So that's all done by a very long...
Formula.
Formula.
That's correct.
And not, not for any specific area.
That's correct.
Correct.
And what you can do in any community, not for us, because, you know, everyone here has pointed out that our local receipts don't go up much. But if you could prove that your local receipts go up more than 4.1% over three-year average, you can actually use something higher than the 4.1% that's written in the bill. But for Far River, that would not be the case.
All right. That's the only question I have. I yield.
Thank you. It is 9:30. We, the only departments we haven't got to here on our agenda is the assessments and insurance and other, which we will carry out into next Tuesday, the 22nd. Before everybody's, so everybody's aware, next meeting is also the meeting that we are going to be going into executive session. So what we're going to be doing, executive session with the police department, with the resolution that I filed, to hear what the police department, the police chief's strategy is. Next week, we have public safety, community maintenance. We're going to have them come first and any carryovers from tonight. Then we're going to have the police chief. Then we have our full council agenda. After the full council agenda is complete, we're going to have to clear the chamber, shut off our microphones if we do decide to do that, and then have our executive session meeting then. I just didn't want counselors to expect the executive session meeting until after because it doesn't make sense to clear the chamber and then come back in. So I'm of the belief that we're going to have executive session, which is meant to discuss strategy. If anybody disagrees with me, please let me know. It's okay. And we will move the executive session to the end. That's what my initial thoughts are. But Counselor Kadim might have a better idea.
Not that I want to disagree with you, but I think it may make more sense if we just go into the city council room that we have instead of clearing out the chamber.
Okay. So, sorry, do you want to have executive session prior to full council?
Well, to me, it doesn't matter. I think instead of having whoever's here leave, I think it's just easier for the nine of us to get up and walk with whoever the department head is in the...
Pre-COVID, we had a, as you recall, we had an executive session session.
Yeah. I mean, we can see if nobody's here, we can make a decision.
Are you going to have Mr. Davis for executive session?
Yeah, we, I don't know if we're going to need Mr., is the need...
If you are, you should do it first so the man doesn't have to stay here all night.
Okay. Is there a need to have Mr. Davis show up in executive session? Who gave us the audit report?
I'd like to have him.
In executive session?
I'd like to have him.
So I guess what would it, what would it pertain to? I don't know that it meets the executive session.
Yeah, I don't think it does. I think having him here as part of the police department's budget presentation would be appropriate. I don't think having Ed Davis to discuss comp time has anything to do with police department's strategy.
I think if he was corporation counsel or, you know, if he was corporation counsel, for instance, and a member of the school committee, I think that'd be different.
Okay. So I think...
He's an outside individual.
I just wanted to check because...
But unless, unless you're going to, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I should have raised my hand.
That's okay.
Unless there's going to be potential conversations about collective bargaining strategy, maybe, then we might be able to get into executive session. So I think you just got to figure out why you're going into executive session. It's got to be for a legitimate purpose.
Yeah, so we've been working on that. The clerks, the clerks and I have been working on that. And it is, Madam Clerk, do you remember the terminology that we, that we used? Because there's a, there's a specific guideline, there's like 10 bullets on what we can do in executive session. Madam Clerk, what did we decide to?
I believe it was exemption four to discuss strategy.
Yeah, that's what I...
Public safety.
To discuss strategy about public safety personnel.
But that's for the resolution. I'm talking about for the actual report, though. So if you're going to go in, because the report's a, the report's, the report's a public document, right? So that's, that's in there. So unless, because there's comp time, and we're going to start talking about, okay, how are we going to correct the comp time issue? And it relates to collective bargaining items, then we can only go into executive session to talk about that specific portion.
With Mr. Davis.
But we've got to be careful because all the rest of the report that doesn't relate to collective bargaining, we've got to come back out and talk about that. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. I'll work out those intricacies with the clerk between now and next week. I was just kind of running it all through my head. If we have to move, we can move into the haring room or in another room in City Hall to conduct our executive session meeting.
Mr. President, what time are we starting? Are we starting early on the 22nd?
Starting at 5:30.
So we're not going to start earlier?
No. We're starting at 5:30.
So it's still at 5:30?
Yep.